All right, I'd like to call the order. The November first meeting of the East Consolidated Zoning Board. Can we have the statement on the hybrid virtual meeting read, please?
Yes, I will actually start with the roll call first. Dan Foyle.
Present.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Fred Wingert.
Present.
Rod Richardson.
Present.
And Ken Klingensmith.
Present.
I'll start with the Zoom hybrid statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number you used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate for all speakers. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call nine one three seven one five nine six six six. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you and the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to approve the agenda. There's a few changes I'd like to recommend. Under item number two, the adopted zoning board bylaws is typographical error. That is not on the agenda. We've done that at the last meeting. And I would like to make a recommendation that we, the business before the board, that application B, item B on our agenda is reviewed first, and then application A that's carried over from the last meeting be reviewed second.
So moved.
Second, Fred Wingert.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that will be our changes on the agenda. Do we have any disclosure conflicts of interest? Hearing none, we'll go with there are no conflicts or interest. And do we have any disclosure of external contacts or discussions? Hearing none, I will move to get a motion to approve the minutes from the September sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Right, when you get a second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 And we'll go ahead and then move on to our board report, Sean.
Thank you, Chairman Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. For Board of County Commissioners' actions on October fifth, the board approved the zoning board bylaws. So if you recall, we, the zoning board adopted those, I believe, in August or, I believe it was August or September, the very first meeting for this new board. So the Board of County Commissioners officially approved that in October fifth with the changes that were recommended by the zoning board. In addition, on October fifth, there was a rezoning preliminary plat and final plat for Stonehill Manor. This was the plat at one hundred and seventy-first and Kenneth Road. That was also approved by the board. So those, those are the only Board of County Commissioners' actions. I could continue with the planning commission update. We had a planning commission meeting on October twenty-fourth, and at that meeting, there was a discussion regarding the airport compatibility plans. Staff is working with a consultant on updating the compatibility plans for both New Century Air Center and Executive Airport, and those are will be a part of the rural comprehensive plan. So the Planning Commission has to hold a public hearing on that. It was a study session at the last meeting. They will have a public hearing on December nineteenth. So there's also a discussion regarding a new lot of record date. Staff is working on amendments to the zoning regulations regarding a lot of record, and that was a good discussion with the Planning Commission. That will also require a public hearing, and those amendments will be held for a public hearing at the November twenty-eighth meeting. That's it for Planning Commission actions. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Can you give us a status report on our two missing members?
Yes. Yeah, good question. I know we have had questions about that. Yes, there are two vacancies right now for the East zoning board, so those two appointees are the chairman's appointees. There are two applications that have been received by the county clerk for those board appointments. They, those appointees will have to be approved by the full board. We expect those to be scheduled for Board of County Commissioners' meeting sometime in the next month. We're not sure exactly what the date is, but we've asked as well for the county clerk, and they're working on that. We hope to have that officially approved within the next month, so that maybe they would be ready for first hearing in December. They'd be available for the meeting in December.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sean. We'll go ahead and move on to the business before the board. We'll hear application number E two, three, three, four, seven, PP slash FPAU preliminary and final plat for seventeen nine hundred Keeler Street. Can we go ahead and have staff report? Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Karen Miller with the Johnson County Planning Department. As indicated in this introduction, this is an application for a preliminary and final development plan related to the existing planned residential low-density district. In this district, the, the development plan is a plat. So, so today we are considering a preliminary and a final plat to go along with the underlying zoning that already exists. The location of this project is between one hundred and seventy-fifth and one hundred and eighty-third street, just west of Ridgeview Road. To zoom in a little bit closer, this, this piece of property is located just to the east of the Coffee Creek Estate subdivision and just, sorry, west and just north of the Sycamore Springs Estate subdivision. This piece of property will be accessed off of Ridgeview Road. You'll go onto Sunset Drive, then one hundred and seventy-ninth Terrace, then Keeler Street. And as part of this, the improvements required for this subdivision, a cul-de-sac bulb will have to be installed onto Keeler Street. As you can see, this is a, a crop of the submitted, the final plat. And you can see that this cul-de-sac bulb, it will be developed with respect to the county street standards. And additionally, there'll have to be a fire hydrant and water line attached to provide water and, and fire flow to these, to these three lots. And we also looked at other infrastructure requirements. And so this application meets all of the, the required minimum infrastructure elements with the exception of one, and that is providing dry sewers. But the, the county engineer looked at the project, determined that the nearest sewer district was four miles away, and that in, in the course of the next fifteen years, it's not expected that sewers will be available for this project. So the idea of dry sewers is not, is not realistic. They, they degrade over time. So the county engineer is recommending a waiver from this requirement. Well, this will be the only waiver that this project needs. Also, staff looked at the, the subdivision requirements. The only issue that staff found is that Lot two does not meet the, the lot depth to width requirement of the, of the subdivision regulations. Instead, it's, has a ratio of one to six. Those particular, that particular requirement is intended to do several things. One is to make sure that an applicant isn't trying to to avoid providing a road when a road is necessary, for instance, a flag-shaped lot. Well, this, this application does have a road, a local road. And then also, sometimes the really long skinny layouts aren't conducive to finding a good place for, for a dwelling. It's not very satisfactory, but you can see Lot two has plenty of, of room to, to use. So with those two things, the, the waiver from the minimum infrastructure and, and we, we dealt with that lot width to depth requirement with the, the flexibility of the planned zoning district. So by, by approving this plat, which is the, which is the development plan, we can approve that, that ratio of one to six with Lot two. So with, with that, we suggest approval of this application. The reasons for approval of the preliminary and final plat are that it meets the minimum infrastructure requirements once the waiver is approved, and that the, the preliminary and final plats are consistent with the requirements of the PRL, PRLD zoning once the, the development plan is approved using that, that inherent flexibility of the zoning district. And then the reasons to approve the minimum infrastructure requirement waiver is that, as indicated by the chief engineer of Johnson County Waste Water District, it's unlikely or unreasonable to expect that sanitary sewer service will be available within a fifteen-year period of time. We also suggest several stipulations. I'll just highlight some of the, the main ones. Prior to recording, the final plat will require that the applicant provide a water line plan and fire hydrant placement plan to the, to the county staff so that we can determine that it meets the, the requirements for providing water service and also a hydrant that can fight fires. And then a petition to the water, to the Water One for a water main extension needs to be signed. And then also, street plans and bonds shall be furnished by the applicant and accepted by the county. And then the last major stipulation would be that the applicant shall provide a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication paid to the county. And with that, I have a suggested motion, and it's up on the screen. It's also on page eleven of the staff report, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions of staff?
This is Keller's. I have one question. So just to clarify, so this subdivision, the only way to access is to going through the other subdivision?
Yes, it's an extension of the existing road. That Keeler Street, that was, that wasn't built until last year. And so that the, our subject parcel was landlocked until Keeler Street went through. And so now we do the, the bulb.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
If we can next hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we put the, the exhibit that showed your overall neighborhood up for just a second? Okay, great. Thanks. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Is this, is this what you want?
Great. My name is Harold Phelps, Phelps Engineering. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the property owners. Alan Armour and Claire Brand are here in the audience with me this evening. Just a quick background, because I think this is a pretty straightforward application. This ten acres, as, as Karen stated, was a landlocked piece until the street, Keeler Street, was constructed to the south of it, which provided access to this property. When the current owners bought the property, they thought they could just come out, build a house, come off the end of the street. When we, when they come in and talk to planning, they got, they got the lesson that you can't just do that. So we got, we got instructed, we have to build a resident, you know, residential cul-de-sac and extend the water and all the utilities. So with that, it made sense to go in and divide it into three lots at this time so that they have the three lots in place. So that's all we're doing tonight. We're in agreement with the stipulations. We appreciate Johnson County Waste Water signing off on the waiver for the sanitary sewer extension being four miles away. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. Could, Mr. Phelps, could you explain on one of the items on page eleven, item nine says BMP easements are indicated on lots one and three of the final plat. At the time of recording, the final plat stormwater treatment facility maintenance agreements acceptable to the county legal department staff regarding the BMPsment shall be recorded with register of deeds. Could you illuminate, first of all, why that's necessary, what they are, whether you anticipate any issues with that?
No, and in fact, we have submitted plans to Public Works now, and we're in the process of getting both the street plans approved and the BMP requirement. So the county adopted stormwater BMP or stormwater quality ordinances. And so what we're doing is, really what we're doing is, is we're going to design some swales, and the water, the water will run through those swales before it runs into the ditch. So we're basically treating the water before it gets to the creek.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, that, that agreement then spells out who takes care of it and whose responsibility it is.
And that has to be completed before you get your final authorization.
Where we get building permit.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Harold. Thank you for that. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it for public opinion or public comment. Is there any one on Zoom or here that would sign up to speak?
I believe they're all signed up to speak on the, the next item.
Next item. All right, having no one here to provide public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and have some discussion among the board. Thoughts?
Rod Richardson, Mr. Chairman, it would appear from staff comments and the information that's been submitted, subject to the various stipulations and things yet to be done, that this would meet all of the requirements necessary to obtain our recommendation for approval. So based on that, I'll put a motion on the table that I move the board approve application number E twenty-three dash three forty-seven dash PP slash FP for a preliminary and final plat for three residential lots to be known as Armour Estates, and to prove the requested minimum infrastructure requirement waiver for the reasons stated by staff earlier and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff and listed in the staff report as stated therein.
Kelly Rast, second.
Mrs. Ken, I, I agree. I think Karen Miller and the applicant did a great job in with the staff report, and I agree as well. Can we go ahead and do roll call for that, please?
Dan Foyle.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Fred Wingert.
Aye.
Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Right, and this will go before the county commissioners?
This will go before the Board of County Commissioners, December seventh, twenty twenty-three, in the Board of County Commissioners' hearing room, which is this room at one eleven South Cherry Street, and the meeting will start at nine thirty AM. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead on to the second item, business before the board. We'll, this is a continuation from the September sixth meeting for application number E two, three, three, one, zero, CUP AU. It's a conditionally used permit renewal for one nine two, two, zero, Knoll Avenue. And we'll go ahead and ask staff for an update.
Thank you, Chairman. Zoning Board members, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. As the chairman indicated, this was an application that was previously considered at the September sixth zoning board meeting. At that time, there were several public comments and some questions and concerns by the zoning board. And the zoning board recommended a continuation for the applicant to consider possible changes. Staff did meet with the applicant following that meeting, and I'll, I'll provide an update with some of these changes. But just as a reminder for this application for the conditional use permit, again, this is the site plan for the subject property. The, the conditional use permit boundary is the north half of the property, essentially the, the ten acres, the north ten acres, which has the existing athletic complex at one hundred and ninety-first and Knoll on the southwest corner. There is a part of a larger property. It's a twenty-acre property, but that south half of, or thirty-acre property, excuse me, the south twenty acres essentially. Oh, no, full twenty acres. The south ten acres is undeveloped and not part of this CUP. So again, this is just the existing athletic complex. That boundary is not changing. And this is the proposed site plan that was submitted as part of the conditional use permit. The applicant is not changing anything with this. Again, it's an existing athletic complex. There is one existing practice field, another for baseball, one existing practice field for softball, as indicated on this plan. There are other practice areas with batting tunnels, pitching areas adjacent to the softball field. Then there is a future practice softball field that's indicated on the plan. This is the same again, same plan that was submitted with the, at the previous hearing. Nothing has changed in this regard for the athletic complex. The only change would be the operation itself with, in terms of types of events and numbers of people. This is, again, a summary of the existing athletic facility operation is for basketball, baseball and softball training, including team practices. There are no games or tournaments on the, the facility, and that will not change with this renewal. There are no lights or school boards or other PA systems or anything that would be changing over what is here today. Practices are from March through October, and with minimal activity for individuals in the winter months if, if available. And then there, there is no practices whenever there's inclement weather, so they do not practice during rain events or snow. And then also, generally, the hours of operation are from nine AM to nine PM, but that changes according to the time of year. They, they end at sunset because there are no lights and they do not practice in the dark. So nothing's changing with that. That's the same as what was previously approved with the facility. So the only changes are really what the applicant mentioned the last time in terms of the types of activities and events they have in the, on the existing facility. So as we mentioned, there was a public hearing at September sixth. The zoning board continued the application at that time because there were several neighbors who had comments and concerns about the, the facility, and the zoning board recommended a continuation for the applicant to consider these issues. So some of the topics that we discussed the last meeting were hours of operation, the term of the conditional use permit, total number of people allowed for the different types of events, parking, the traffic capacity on one hundred and ninety-first street, and noise related to the athletic complex. So I'll go through a little bit of that. We did meet, as I mentioned, staff met with the applicant following the meeting to discuss these issues, and we'll go through that. The applicant did provide a traffic impact analysis with the original submittal. In addition, they provided a memo which is included in your packet for a street capacity memo to address street capacity for one hundred and ninety-first street. So there were a lot of questions regarding the capacity that would be suitable for traffic on one hundred and ninety-first street, both for existing traffic and future development, and with this proposed CUP. As noted in the memo, the existing traffic count data for one hundred and ninety-first street is average daily traffic of two thousand one hundred and thirty-four vehicles. The, the analysis, the original analysis estimated approximately fourteen hundred and forty daily trips for the regular practice and training sessions. So that's, that's included. That's, that's including today's estimated traffic volume of two thousand one hundred and thirty-four. So you could approximately assess, you know, maybe half of the, the traffic that's on that road, and that section of road would be going to the existing facility. The one thing that was changing, or the applicant is wanting to change with this proposal is the showcase events, which they're asking for up to four showcase events per year. The traffic memo and the analysis anticipated up to four hundred additional daily trips. So even with that additional daily trips, the proposed traffic count on one hundred and ninety-first street would be approximately two thousand five hundred and thirty-four vehicles. As mentioned at the last meeting, staff discussed this, and the, and the applicant addressed this as well. For a typical two-lane rural roadway such as one hundred and ninety-first street, the capacity would be up to nine thousand to ten thousand vehicles per day would be suitable on a roadway such as this. The, the Public Works Department reviewed that memo, and they agreed with that, that capacity memo. They had no concerns regarding the existing or proposed traffic on one hundred and ninety-first street. So I wanted to mention that traffic impact analysis. There were no other changes that the applicant was requesting at this time, other than the number of people allowed for the facility. If you recall, there was a stipulation, the applicant was requesting anywhere up to, I believe it was eighty people for practices, and that would include athletes, coaches, and and any spectators or generally parents or scouts or anyone else. The original stipulation that staff had recommended was fifty-six. They, they had indicated in the staff report that they requested, again, up to eighty. Staff believes it should be closer to what was listed in the original conditional use permit narrative, and that was, I believe it was fifty-six. Staff would recommend, we set a, a number at, a maximum number of sixty people for any practices at any given time. So that's stipulation three that we'll, we'll talk about that revision. Again, that's more consistent with what the applicant was requesting in their narrative, and that includes everyone. Total number of people, athletes, coaches, and anyone else. In addition, staff would recommend a total of up to ninety people onsite for showcase events. That's stipulation four. I believe the applicant was originally requesting up to a hundred and twenty people, but we felt that it should be lower to basically be closer in line with what the narrative said and what we think would be more suitable for that site. The applicant also did, well, staff is recommending that the applicant submit a revised site plan showing the area designated for overflow parking if necessary. There was a concern regarding the existing parking area onsite. They were showing up to forty vehicles on the existing gravel parking area. Staff would recommend that they show revised site plan showing overflow parking if necessary for certain events like showcases. The applicant did indicate that they would be willing to do that, and that they would park additional vehicles adjacent to the park, the gravel parking area closer to the gate, but they would keep it in line with the existing parking area, so they could do that if necessary. And then also, staff recommended that the owner would install a non-regulatory stop sign, basically a private stop sign. So this would not be a jurisdictional stop sign that you see on a public road, but it would be essentially a private stop sign that the owner would install at the end of their driveway at one hundred and ninety-first street. And that was to address concerns for traffic pulling out onto one hundred and ninety-first street. There was concern that maybe some of the younger drivers maybe would be pulling out on the road without coming to a stop. This is not a requirement by County Public Works, so I want to emphasize that this would be a non-regulatory stop sign, but that's something that the applicant was in agreement to do, and that would be addressed with this CUP. Those are, those are the items that staff recommended for changes. The applicant was in agreement with those changes. And included in your staff report, there were four stipulations that were changed. As I mentioned before, we would recommend up to sixty people for any practice event, the stipulation three, up to ninety people for any showcase event, and there'd be four showcase events. And in addition to that change for the showcase events, to address concerns about whether or not they would be in compliance, staff recommended additional requirements that the applicant provide an update to county staff both before and after these events to provide a total number of people that are scheduled to participate in these showcases, and the total number of people who are actually onsite at any given time. So if there are scouts or coaches, we needed to have a list of all those people, the total numbers. The applicant would be required to provide that report to ensure that they're in compliance, that they remain in compliance. That was a, a change that staff recommended to include in this, and the applicant was in agreement with that as well. And then finally, as I mentioned, staff is recommending the condition for the revised site plan showing additional parking area, stipulation number sixteen, and then a new stipulation number seventeen for the non-regulatory stop sign at one hundred and ninety-first street. That concludes staff's recommendations with this change. The applicant is available also for questions and, and any presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for staff.
Any questions of staff?
Kelly Rast, I have a question. Okay, so to clarify for the stop sign, you're basically, is it, are you saying that there's no consequences if they're not compliant with the stop sign?
Well, there's no consequences from the county, so the county would have no jurisdiction on that. So if there were any enforcement, if for whatever reason there was a, an accident or somebody didn't follow the stop sign, it's a non-regulatory stop sign, meaning that the county would not have any jurisdiction on it. And I believe that, yeah, there would be no enforcement for that. So it's really a, it's a, a compliance. It's a, it's a suggestion, but you know, it's similar to any shopping center you may see that may have a private stop sign that's not enforced by the local jurisdiction, but it's a, it's a stop sign. It's just an advisory for people to know to stop. I will say, Public Works staff is very concerned about making that a requirement. So we noted that the zoning board recommended it. The applicant was in agreement to installing it, but we want to be very clear that it's not a regulatory stop sign that the county has any enforcement over, or the sheriff's office has the enforcement over. It's a, it's a private stop sign.
Yes, agree. I'm just worried about once the word gets out to all the kids there that they're not going to take it seriously. So it's kind of a mute point if there's no consequences. A lot of times it doesn't really mean anything. So that's something to be taken in consideration. The other thing was, I wanted just to, can you go back and clarify the, with the CUP between expire the, with the CUP between expired versus renewal? Then versus also the fact that this, I understand that the boundaries of the property are not changing, but the boundaries of this CUP are changing. So you know, that's, that's different. How do we reconcile all these differences? Cause I know it's been brought up by, you know, a lot of the, you know, residents around there. But you know, can you explain that? Cause I mean, it did expire, correct?
That is correct.
Why wouldn't this be considered a new or why are we calling it a renewal? And what's the difference between going through a renewal process versus a new one? Is there not, would it be the same? Just so that people understand all that aspect.
Yeah. Good question. It's definitely a question that is confusing because you could call it either a new conditional use permit or renewal. It really doesn't matter because the applicant's required to go through the same process. It's still a public hearing like we're holding here. It still has to be approved by the board of county commissioners. And there's no change in that respect, whether it's a renewal or a new one. The only reason we note that is just to recognize that there was previously a conditional use permit approved for this property. But you are correct, this CUP has expired for the site. And then they were required to renew this or get a new permit if they were to continue using the facility. And the owner does want to continue using the facility. So the boundary does change only by way of making it smaller. Originally, the conditional use permit covered the entire twenty acres of the property. Now the applicant is just covering the existing facility because they have no plans to expand to the south. They want to keep it where it is. That's the only reason it's changed in boundary. But no other changes in terms of increasing other than to add a new field, which was also shown with a previously approved CUP. They showed another field, it's just shifted locations. And of course, as we mentioned last time, there will be no indoor facility on this site now. The previous CUP that was approved in 2017 had a building approved with this. And that is, the applicant is no longer planning that for the site.
Okay, Kelly Russ, one last time, I just wanted to, for the record, that the zoning board never approved the previous CUP. It came, it was remanded, it was denied again. It was only passed by the county commissioner. So I just want to make, make a note of that.
Yes, the zoning board recommended denial of the previous CUP and the, and it was remanded. And again, recommended for denial by zoning board and then ultimately approved by the board of county commissioners, correct?
This is Fred Winger. Sean, you may recall back in two thousand twenty one, in July, we reviewed this. And I was looking through the minutes. I believe that you had, you had this, you were the, the designated planner. And I noticed on page seven of the July seventh, two thousand one minutes, and you probably don't have it in front of you. But I think it's important that I want to understand better. This is from the minutes. I should note too, this is consistent with the proposal that you recall was located at an existing facility. The applicant Luke Town has an athletic training facility, Advanced Baseball Academy located one hundred ninety first and all. If you recall, the applicant, the application was withdrawn at the last zoning board meeting and they are considering a new site for a facility. If this conditional use permit is approved for this proposed facility, the existing facility will remain next year. Will remain for the next year and that conditional use permit is good through 2022. And if approved, the applicant moves forward, the applicant will vacate their facility on NALL. So this will replace the existing facility. And so I'm review, I've reviewed these, this was brought up at our last meeting, the meeting we had, I reviewed this. So was it the staff's understanding? I believe it was the board's understanding that we approved the last facility where the smokehouse was, that this facility was going to be vacated. Was that the staff's understanding?
Yes, Sean Penley, I, I think that was staff's understanding at the time when Mr. Town applied for the new conditional use permit for the site on Metcalf. The primary intent, the reason for that, just so to remind everyone, they had started the application previously on this site in 2021 for a renewal of the existing facility, which included a building.
Right.
Because the applicant decided the building would not be conducive on this site. They recognized the issues that were raised at that time from the neighborhood regarding access on NALL because the indoor facility would be on NALL. There were a lot of concerns about that. The owner agreed, this is going to be probably problematic for a couple of reasons, even including their facility. They didn't want to have access to a new facility on NALL. So they identified the site on Metcalf. So they withdrew this application at that time. And they got approval for the site on Metcalf, which is now being constructed. For the main intent for the building, they wanted to have an indoor facility there. It was staff's understanding that when this would expire the next year, that this would no longer be needed because they're moving their facility on Metcalf. I don't know if the applicant fully intended that to be the case. That is what staff said, we indicated that. For whatever reason, whether that was the full intent or if they would just meant for that to be the, the indoor facility would no longer be here. Regardless, the applicant is, we, we asked at this time that renewal, that this is expired. Are you intending for this to go away? Are we done? Or you want to continue operation? In which case you need to renew your CP. The applicant decided, we are wanting to keep this existing outdoor facility, not an indoor facility. So we want to renew it with the change that we don't have an indoor facility. So as I think the applicant indicated at the last meeting, maybe the intent was for the indoor facility to go away. They were not going to build that, but they wanted to keep their outdoor fields. Whatever the reason, the applicant does have the right to come in with a conditional use permit and request it. Yeah. So there's definitely some confusion on what was meant by that. Didn't mean the whole facility is going away or just the indoor facility. That's a question for the applicant, but they had indicated they do want to keep this facility as it is. And that's why the CUP is required now.
So, okay, I'm.
This is Kelly Russ. I, I, I hear what you're saying from the applicant's standpoint. As a board member's standpoint, I voted to approve the Metcalf location with the understanding that this location was going to be done. So there's two sides of that. There's the applicant's understanding, there's the board's understanding with how it shows that Fred read, that that's how we understood it, which, you know, at least for me, I'll be transparent. That was part of my voting decision. And I think that needs to be noted.
Mr. Chairman, Rod Richardson. Sean, a couple of questions. On the existing building on Metcalf, I was not on the board when that matter came up, but am I correct? That is a conditional use permit and it expires when?
That is correct. The conditional use permit was approved for the new site on Metcalf. I believe they were approved with a five year CUP. I would have to confirm that, maybe the applicant knows.
Okay. Well, it's, but it is a CUP.
Yes.
Second, the second question. We talked about the, the stop sign and the concerns about that. But my question goes to parking that might be taken up on one hundred ninety first street and NALL. Anywhere on there. Is any consideration given to that? Or could the county, since those are county roads, indicate no parking along those rights away?
I think the board can recommend any stipulations regarding parking and the applicant can better state this. But I believe what the applicant would intend, if additional overflow parking was necessary, they propose adding it on to their existing gravel parking area just to the, on the west side of the site. They would not provide any new parking on NALL.
Right. I guess my concern is people will park on NALL probably and on one hundred ninety first street regardless. Should this be approved? My question is merely if that is a concern of the board and one of the proposed stipulation modifications was to ban parking on NALL and one hundred ninety first. The county could in fact do that, could they not?
That is a good question, one which I am not qualified to answer because there are rules regarding parking on public streets. I am pretty confident the applicant can answer this. There is definitely no way anyone would park on NALL because there's no driveways on NALL. There's no way to cross through the trees and, and the terrain is pretty rough. On NALL, they can't, can't park over there and walk across. Even on one hundred ninety first street, I, I don't know what the rules are, to be honest, on parking. We, I don't believe we can require no parking signs. But again, I would, I would want to defer that maybe to public works. We have.
My reason simply that people park wherever it's convenient. A lot of times it may be a lot more convenient to park on one hundred ninety first street than, than the parking lot, particularly if it's crowded or people want to get in and out quick. I'm, I'm just asking the question, I'm not prejudging whether, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. And my last question is more of a theoretical one. Is there any zoning category in the regulations under which this particular application would fall? If they were seeking rezoning? Or is it a mandatory conditional use permit under any zoning?
I believe a conditional use permit is required for an athletic complex regardless of zoning. So even I believe maybe Karen Miller, they could help me with that. But I believe even in an industrial or a commercial district.
That's correct. It's a class A CUP and that is a CUP under all zoning districts.
Can you comment on why that is?
I will try to take a guess of that because it's like any conditional use permit we have. These are considered unique uses regardless of the zoning district in which they're in. They are not something that typically have in most areas. Conditional use permit would be to address these unique conditions or requirements that should be imposed in the development. It's hard to provide standard stipulations or permit, you know, zoning requirements for a, a CUP type of use like this. They're unique. I think that's why they have to have a conditional use permit because they are unique to any zoning district. They wouldn't, this may not fit with a standard PRB to retail, you know, commercial district and maybe too intense even for that, if it's only a small site. But if you talk about a ten acre site, maybe it's appropriate in the right area. I think that's why a conditional use permit is required in all districts.
And then my last request before, could you refresh our collective recollection on the provisions in the code that have to be met in order for a conditional use permit to be, to be approved? Or at least considered for approval? And I think you cite the section in your, your commentary.
Yeah, I believe it's in the staff report and the, at least in the original staff report dated August 31st. You know, we do have conditions as the kind of a golden analysis that staff reviews. And I do not have that with me right here, but we do cite that section in the zoning regulations that there are standards that any CUP or a land use action such as this would require review. Staff did include that in the previous staff report.
I know it's, and I read that, but I, I think it's Article 23, Section 6C. And I didn't bring the giant volume up with me, but if you happen to have that at some point, the reason I ask is all conditional use permits, particularly on this, certainly one factor, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but one factor is that since it is a conditional use permit and it is not a use that's allowed in the existing zoning, it has to be found to essentially not harm the existing uses within that zone. Or not, not be an unreasonable harm to it. And I fully understand there's no perfect, there's no perfect solution to that. I mean, you know, but that's of some, that's of some significance. And when anytime, and generically, when we're considering any conditional use permit, we have to look at the square peg and the round hole and whether it's been rounded up enough to fit without doing any real damage. And as I say, nobody's entitled to perfect quiet, there's no right to absolute quiet or absolute anything. There has to be some room for a consideration of these conditional use permits simply as a matter of law would seem to me. It's, they're authorized under the, under the code to be considered. So if you have something there, you can comment on what those are, it would be helpful to hear those.
Yes. So Karen Miller, thank you. She helped provide the, cite the sections in the zoning regulations. It is Article 23, Section 6. The guidelines for issues of conditional use permit. The zoning board shall not recommend that a conditional use permit be granted unless, based on the evidence presented to it, the specific case considered the following, that any conditional use permit is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations. That the granting of the conditional use permit will not impair any adequate supply of light, unduly increase hazardous from fire or other dangers, increased traffic on streets or highways beyond their capacity, unduly increase potential for flood damages, otherwise unduly impair public health, safety, morals, general welfare. And, and will not pollute the air, land or water. Those are the primary standards that are considered. Staff did include a analysis, review of that in the previous report. And in additional, in addition, the conditional use prints, there's a, a number of items, A through H that talk about, you know, meeting buffer requirements, screening, it would be compatible with surrounding areas. And so again, staff did that review. It's included in that previous staff report. So we did do a thorough review and, and that was very similar to the review that was done in 2017 for the site. We just, we added additional review for things because the applicant wasn't requesting an increase in the total numbers of people onsite. We did additional review and we addressed that in the staff report.
Plus the golden requirements.
Plus the golden requirements were reviewed at that time.
So basically we have to consider these conditional use issues, which you're, you and staff have indicated to us, you believe those have been met.
That is correct.
Factually. And then the golden criteria you believe have been met. We have to consider those based on what's presented and making our decisions. So, okay.
I believe that is attachment for the, the previous staff report. We included that in the board's attachment for the, it's the staff report dated August 31st.
Right, right. And, and I guess the last question, when this says, your report says that the stipulation would be no loudspeakers. And that's what, that would include handheld megaphones, that sort of thing. You know, electrically amplified. Hey, move over from left field to right field, et cetera, because you don't want to yell across the field. But that would be a concern to me as well.
Yeah, I certainly would think that we definitely would not want any voice amplification system as that is stated in the stipulation. And I think the applicant can answer that, but I, I do not think that their coaches use any devices like that. Maybe, maybe just whistles, I don't know. But there are no voice systems that they use for coaching.
Okay. Well, when it's the applicant's turn, at least I can only speak for myself, but I'd be interested in his comments on both the CUP issues as well as the golden issues. I don't think we need a huge, I don't need a huge analysis of it, but I'd be curious as to your, your position on those items. Thank you.
This is Kelly Russ. So let me ask from this standpoint. If unincorporated Johnson County required commercial businesses to carry business licenses, this would not even be in front of us today because it's on, because of the zoning. It is not appropriate for a commercial business.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, Johnson County and the unincorporated part of Johnson County does not require people to carry business license. And this is a commercial entity. If they required that, he would be holding a commercial business license to run the baseball facility. And then therefore it would not meet the requirements of the zoning of this property. Is that correct?
I have no knowledge of anything regarding a business license. I know that is correct. The county does not, the unincorporated does not require business licenses. If we did, and if the board did require that and we had regulations for a business license, I don't know how that would affect a CUP. My guess is they would still have to get a CUP regardless.
Well, it would be a commercial license and a commercial license can't be on a rural zone property, is that correct?
I have no idea because again, I don't know what the requirements for a business license would be. I mean, I think theoretically somebody could have a business license with a home occupation. I don't know.
Right. And those do have very specific stipulations as, I mean, far less people. You're just talking one employee, all that. So you're right, that's in there and those are, those are in our guidelines and stuff. But that's again, a far different entity than this large scale of commercial baseball. You know, business. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
This is Ken. Sean, do you have any sense of a comparison of this facility to the one the zoning board had approved on one hundred ninety first in Mission? Which Kelly, that was actually in our N1 zoned area with that baseball field, no lights, no amplification, number of people. Does it, do you have any sense of that?
Very, very similar. The only difference, that site had very similar, a conditional use permit for that site at on one hundred ninety first, just east of NALL, closer to Mission. That property, I think it had a very similar size as this. Two fields, I believe, and they had other activities associated with that too. I believe there was a zip line and some other activities that they have in the site. But I don't know the numbers, I can't tell you the numbers of people or athletes that would be allowed on the, on that particular CUP. But it is similar in terms of size of property and number of practice fields. And they also had a conditional use permit for that site.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, can you, did you have any additional information on the concern we had related to the noise?
Staff, we talked about that with the applicant. Staff did not have any concern regarding the noise because there was never a requirement for a any noise abatement or a noise study with the previous CUP. The only requirement was there was a discussion about noise. They had the indoor facility, they would have to do a noise study because that could be year round. And that would be used primarily for hitting and it would be, could have a potential for more noise associated with that, even though it was in an indoor facility. If it's a metal building, you could still hear that outside. So they had a requirement for a noise analysis on the building. There was never a requirement for noise on the outdoor fields. So staff felt that that wasn't necessary since that has never been required for the existing athletic complex.
And this is kind of the, the increase in numbers, just to confirm what you have in the report is because when I looked at the numbers on the last presentation, the 56 people, I see the intent was that was athletes and coaches, but I was at the time in September, looking at that was total people. So we've now increased that to 80 and 120 total people. And we already have concerns with parking on the property as well as parking on 191st Street. And I know that one of the, Carol Dean specifically pointed out that folks have parked on both sides of 191st Street. I've seen folks park on 191st Street because I live out that way. Any additional, I mean, they, if we looked at how many parking spots would be needed for a facility that would have 120 people or 80 people?
Yes. So I think what we had recommended is although the applicant was requesting up to, I believe it was 80 for practices and up to 120 for showcases. We recommended only up to 60 for the practices and 90 for showcases. The applicant was in agreement with that since the time they submitted that request. We have not looked at the required parking with, in the event they have a showcase. The applicant, because they had indicated they would not have all of those athletes on the field at any one time. They, it's through the course of a day, they would have scheduled sessions like a, like a combine essentially for baseball. They would be bringing people in from, they would be rotating between the facility on Metcalf and the site. So they wouldn't all be at the site at any one time. So they would be going back and forth. So they wouldn't, as we understand it, need to have additional parking because they could manage it. However, if they did, they would have to show that. And that's why we recommended that stipulation for the site plan. I don't know the numbers of what could be accommodated with additional parking, but that's something that the applicant could address. I did also want to mention, I'm sorry, I failed to mention in the presentation. Staff did receive some additional public comments just in the last two days. And those were, we've provided copies to the zoning board and those will be included as part of the record. We had six public comments and we wanted to make note of that. And you may hear some of those comments tonight, but we'll, we'll include that in the record. But as far as parking, that's what we wanted to see from the applicant to show where that parking would be. They indicated, they indicated that they would provide that overflow parking along the drive to the north of the existing drive, uh, north of the existing parking area.
Any other questions of staff?
Rod Richardson, again, one last question on the exit or the entrance. And I'm just looking at the, the graphic that's on the screen. Is that wide enough or will there be something proven on it so that? Well, I guess my question is if you have cars going out and cars coming in at the same time, is it wide enough to accommodate traffic in both directions or is that a, a one way in, one way out road?
I believe the existing drive is wide enough to accommodate incoming and outgoing traffic. But I would, may want the applicant to address that. And maybe if our public works staff is aware, but that, I believe that accommodates that two-way traffic today.
Thank you.
And this is Ken Klingensmith again. I'm comparing this type of a project to the project such as put in the Stillwell Community Park. Parking designated spaces, entranceway sizes, all of that was extremely particular and important. It doesn't seem like there's that much focus on the parking, the structured parking, the in and out capabilities, the parking on 191st Street. I feel like we're much more relaxed about that. Is that something that is more driven by the applicant? Or is there county guidelines that drive those types of standards?
Yeah, that's a good question. So for again, a conditional use permit, it's really a case by case basis. There is no requirement that an athletic complex have a paved parking area with striped spaces. It's always been allowed to have gravel parking as they have it today. They don't need to stripe them, they don't need to mark that area. I guess the intent was to try to keep it more kind of that temporary rule atmosphere versus a true defined permanent commercial development with paved parking areas. There's no requirement for the RUR zoning district to have paved parking. That would be required if it were a parking area for say, you know, industrial or commercial area. They would have to have that designated parking and meet the minimum parking standards. But again, because this is a conditional use permit, it's not, it's not a requirement. The applicant felt that it was better to have it the way it is. That's open to parking as needed.
Thank you for that response. Any final questions before we hear from the applicant? Thanks, Sean.
Scott Karyorgas, Public Works. I just wanted to comment on the driveway width. It does meet requirements from Public Works standards for two-way traffic. So that's after going out and checking it in the field, it was, it's 24 feet wide at the drive approach. So I just wanted to make sure to readdress that.
Thank you. Please.
Chairman, Board members. Good evening. Kurt Peterson here on behalf of the applicant again. 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri. At the outset, I just want to state for the record to be official that applicant is supportive of staff's positive recommendation along with all stipulations, which number one through 17, which do accompany staff's positive recommendation. Mr. Penley, staff report, the discussion that we just had, his presentation all really do provide a good recap of where we've been. When we concluded the discussion, what it's been about 60 days ago before this board, you instructed the applicant to reflect on some of the things that individual board members had said and to work with staff, as Mr. Penley said. And I just want you to know, you heard Mr. Penley say it, we certainly did. We reflected on everything, all the pages of notes that we took, went back and worked with staff to be back here today with as much, you know, compromise as we could. So my impression after that was pretty lengthy meeting last time that we had, pretty substantive, was that there was a general recognition that the applicant hasn't really done anything wrong in the last five years to, you know, cause someone to not give them another CUP. But there are issues that were still discussed, but talk to us about those. The board members, you wanted us to look at those. So that's again, exactly what we did. And those concepts that we worked with staff on are again, as Mr. Penley said, reflected in those revised stipulations, which again, we're perfectly fine with. So to be clear, our goal tonight in this brief time when I'm here and then answering your questions is really to earn your positive recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Not only based on the applicant's track record for the last five plus years at the site, because I do think that's important. Whether we call it a renewed CUP or a new CUP legally, which is what matters, it doesn't matter. And so use whatever terminology you want. There is a history though, that we hope and really do believe the facts reflect that this applicant does deserve a new or renewed CUP. But also it doesn't stop there. Also, just looking at what the applicant has done with staff and listen to your comments, we'd ask that you take that into consideration too, as you consider tonight's CUP application. So I want to use my few minutes here to address the primary issues that were raised by various members of this board two months ago, so that each of you by the end, I hope are empowered from all perspectives in the room with all the facts as you make your recommendation one way or another to the Board of County Commissioners. So first of five issues, the first is the traffic capacity. As Mr. Penley touched on, on 191st Street specifically, there was quite a bit of discussion actually, even from residents on that topic. So as Sean noted, our traffic engineer did prepare that additional addendum because of your comments. That's in the staff packet that does say of the 10,000 vehicles per day that this road is rated for, that I'm going to say it in a percentage way, just to keep it fresh instead of the counts. This operates whether you're talking about practices or whether you're talking about a showcase event at 20 to 25% of road capacity. So very low, there's lots of capacity here. And you heard professional staff just confirm that that's, that's accurate. Also, there was a couple of other issues that were brought up, just want to be exhaustive here because hopefully tonight there's a decision made by this board as to its recommendation. So I don't want to miss anything. From a sightline perspective, if you remember, some people said, as you're pointing north, getting onto 191st, is there good sightlines? I hope some people had a chance to drive by and look at that again. I will tell you, look you all in the eyes as somebody that is there every single week. It's perfect. There was a time, I think, where there was overgrowth to the, as you look to the west, there's not, it's, there's, there's no sightline issues. We've agreed, as you heard Mr. Penley say, with the board's thoughts about, hey, should there be a stop sign? As to the technicalities of whether the county wants to have a jurisdictional stop, stop sign or more of a private stop sign, we a hundred percent defer, but we are fine with that concept as incorporated into the staff stipulations. Overall, just make a note, sometimes we don't, there's things said and we don't get a chance to come back up and talk about them with you again. There was this idea that there's all these young drivers. Overall, if you look at all the age ranges of teams here that the towns have at this ABA, AFA have at this facility, most teams are not of driving age, most of them are not. So it's people like me that spend, you know, time out there every single week, picking up and dropping off their kids. Now there are some of the older, the high school teams, kids do drive, but I just don't want to give the impression that all we have is young drivers. That said, I don't want to malign our young drivers, our, our high school kids, because there have been no reported accidents in this entire period. It's kind of getting the facts on the record. Nothing associated with applicants' families coming and going from the site at all. And that's, you know, the five to six year period. So wanted to make sure we're all clear on that. And then all of that that I just mentioned, along with that additional traffic memorandum again, is hopefully that's our way of addressing that discussion that happened two months ago. That was issue number one, traffic capacity on 191st. Number two is the use capacity of the site itself. And rather than stating use capacities as a maximum number of players or at one time as a maximum number of players and coaches. If you're, if numbers are swimming in your head, I don't blame you. Because we've all been trying to decide, well, what's the metric we're going to go with? And then you decide on the number, right? What are we measuring? And so coming out of the meeting last time, it seemed like a number of you at least were saying, you know, and you remember we went back and forth, it's kind of, we'll, we'll use whatever metric you want. And it seemed like the prevailing metric was we want to go with, and this is the exact, to be precise in the staff report, is players, coaches and spectators. So you're looking at everybody, let's get a snapshot and let's put a number on that. And we're fine with that. It's true, we were offering numbers for the two situations, practices on the one hand or a showcase on the other hand. But we are before you right now, you heard Mr. Penley accurately state, and you heard me accept all the stipulations. We're okay with the numbers that have been proposed by staff, which again, listens to what the, many of the board members wanted, which is an overall cap. These new maximums are set forth, as Sean said, in the staff stipulation. So if this is recommended and the Board of County Commissioners approves it, we will live by, by those caps. In addition, Mr. Penley mentioned this in the staff report, but not verbally, because again, you don't, you didn't walk through and read every word of the staff report. But I want to pause on this just to show the earnestness and the straightforwardness of this applicant. When it comes to the showcase events, and you remember we'd be requesting up to four of those a year. It'd be two softball, two baseball. There were some things, I should have written down the page number, but you all saw this when you reviewed the staff packet. It was alternative option, right? Alternative option when it comes to the showcase events, alternative stipulation. And what it offered, it, it came from the applicant right after that meeting, said, you know what? I know this is going to be operated the way we're saying it. And I'll get to parking in a minute, but I know there's not going to be anybody parked on 191st Street. I know that it's not going to be melee. It's going to be exactly as the towns run everything. It's going to be excellent and exactly as we described to this body and to the, ultimately to the Board of County Commissioners. So here's what we're going to do. Don't just take our word for it. Let's have the first one be a trial, a trial showcase. And we'll come back and there's some specific language we're okay with that Mr. Penley put in the staff report that says, we'll come back within such and such days, whatever it says, after that first showcase event. And we'll go in front of the Board of County Commissioners and staff will give its report as to what the results were and we'll answer questions. And if we didn't live up to what, exactly what we said we do in terms, in terms of how it's operated, then we will not have the right to do it. If, if the Board of County Commissioners finds we did exactly what we said we do and it was operated correctly, then we revert back to up to four a year under the CUP. As I described two months ago, the, these, again, limited showcase events up to four a year will provide an affordable, and this is key. I mean, the, especially Mr. Town would, would kick me if I didn't say this because it's, there's a vision here. This isn't just go out and play some baseball. And the vision is for the showcase is providing an affordable way for local athletes to have a shot, to be in front of recruiting scouts for colleges, including many in Stillwell, to get in front of these coaches without having a big expense for travel and a big expense. And they're, I'm talking high price to get in the couple of other showcases you could even get to in the region. So overall, on this use capacity issue, number two, applicant is ready to demonstrate to the county that it will work as planned, or we won't have the right to do these showcase events. Issue number three that we heard the board speak about was hours of operation. As before, on this topic, we are still requesting the same hours of operation we've had since inception. So nothing more, nothing different than what's been happening the last five plus years. And that is Monday through Sunday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Now, that sounds very, if somebody took a soundbite or that was put in a newspaper article, it'd be incredibly misleading. I have to say that because it's the outer bounds, it's what staff reported. But you'll recall, this does not mean that teams are practicing on this site 12 hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, far from it. You have a detailed breakdown, if you remember, and I believe it even made into this staff packet at the back in terms of our, I think we called it project narrative, Mr. Penley. But in there, we broke down on a very, very specific basis, the, the hours of use throughout all the different times of year. So you can track and follow exactly what I mean when I say far from, you know, a nine to nine operation, seven days a week. So at the highest level summary, and I mean high level here, this is what it is, and you can go into all the details and you probably have already reviewed them. It's really the facility is only start, start high and move down here. High level, six months a year. That's mid-March to mid-July, those that know the baseball schedule know this cold. And then mid-August to mid-October, so six month a year, six month a year, it's, it's not being used. When it's being used for those six months, it's primarily used after school during most of the school year, but not on weekends when we go to tournaments all spring and early summer. So it's during, during the week again, after school. And then in the fall, which we just concluded, it's, it's really primarily used on the weekends. So the quick numbers just to have one metric that if you're like me, I'm a numbers person through and through. And so it helps me to calculate some quick numbers. So I calculated those hours that are in, in the packet across the whole year. So if we talk about the hours of the year that it's being used, it's between three and 4% of the overall hours in the year as this facility has been used. Now, if you say Kurt, people have to sleep, that's not fair. Okay, I took out 12 hours, people sleep, can sleep 12 hours a day. And if you take 12 hours a day out, you're still at seven to eight percent of the entire, you know, 12 hour waking days of hours of the year, this facility is being used. So my point is in terms of total hours of use for this facility, although it's incredibly important to this baseball program, it's very, very low intensity and volume. Coach Town has scheduling down to a science. Just talking to him today about scheduling in 30 minute increments and how he blends different ages of teams at different times. It's incredible. And that has, why there have been no issues in that respect in the last six years and won't be any issues going forward. But I'll say this, it's very important, even though we're talking about seven to eight percent of waking hours during the year, it's very, very important to have the opportunity to continue to use the fields during these hours and schedules to make sure everyone gets the practice time they need. That's another 20 minute discussion to drill into all that, but it's a hundred percent true. Issue number four is noise. This is a tough one, honestly. I mean, really tough. And when I say that, I don't mean that I think there's undue noise coming from the baseball practices to neighboring homes. I mean, it's tough because it's hard to talk about. Everything this body does is based on facts and evidence, right? In terms of making your, it's not feelings and things like that. So on the one hand, you've heard several people from the public say two months ago that there are loud noises that come from the site that they don't like, that disrupts them. They talked about particularly, I took away bats hitting balls seemed to be the sound that they said was, was most disconcerting. So I think if I'm you on this topic, and I think, how are you supposed to evaluate that? That's really hard. Can baseball sounds, I'll say, be heard from properties, the closest properties, from the next ring of properties? And, 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 and what kind of sound, like the lawnmower down the street or kids playing in the park a block over? Or something that's, I'll say a gunshot, something that we'd all say, oh my gosh, that's awful, you know? So here's what I know to be true. And that's all I can say is what I know to be true is you weigh the facts. A number of neighbors testified before the board in September that they either can't hear anything from their property when there's practices or the sounds are not significant or intrusive. We heard from a few people. Also, I know to be true that the nearest homes, and there are two that you could classify as the nearest, one to the south and one to the west. We talked about this again, two months ago. The one to the south is approximately two and a half football fields away, the one to the south, right? And it's across open, pres- And it's across open preserved field that is a total of 10 acres, as you saw when Sean put the slide up on the screen. That we're talking, that's, that's close. The other closest property is just to the west. And that's more than a football field away, 300, approximately 375 feet. Think Arrowhead sitting in the stands on both ends of the end zone. Also, I hope that some of you have had the chance to walk the property, which you're more than welcome to do at any time. It sits eight to feet, eight to 10 feet lower than the south and west neighboring properties. And there's protected berms and trees and vegetation on top. There's pictures in your staff packet that you can see. So again, I'm laying out the facts, right? It's again, it's hard to, how do I judge noise here? Remember that machine pitches are not allowed, no machines. So this is just coaches back there in the two batting cages, there's only two. We don't do live hitting on the field. It's not what that field was built for. So just in the batting cages with coaches throwing, there's no outdoor PA system. And someone asked, there's no whistles, we don't do whistles in baseball or softball, literally zero whistles. There's no handheld devices, there's nothing that, other than, other than your voice. And then there's my, finally, on the issue of noise, and I'm spending time on this because again, it was talked about a lot. There's my regular weekly firsthand observations, which I think are fair, right? Just as others have firsthand observations. Every week I park by the field that we're talking about, every single time, on the gravel. I open the back of my, my truck and I work on my laptop or, and I have client calls as I sit there in the back with the, with the breeze. Sounds from the field and the two batting cages are nothing. I can literally talk to clients and, and it's just that they're, they're not loud. And I'm in the parking lot next to the field, next to the batting cages. I took several of my kids during a recent practice in September and I drove 194th, we put all our windows down. 194th, as you all know, is the next east-west street to the south. And I drove Heritage Drive, which is the next north street, north-south street to our west. You'd say those are the closest streets and I drove it, I told everybody to be really quiet. And I said, everybody listen, we're going to go really slowly, five mile an hour and crawl down those streets. Can you hear anything that's going on in the practice? And on oath, before everybody in the room, on the record, could not get a single, couldn't get a bat, couldn't get a Yelp, couldn't get a coach cheering somebody on, I couldn't get anything. As you evaluate the question of whether there is unacceptable noise affecting other properties around this area, I hope and trust you will consider all of these facts in your analysis. Lastly, on parking, this is the other main issue we heard about. And I'm going to toss in here, there was a couple of good questions from the dais here tonight that I'm going to go ahead and answer. I assume that that's okay, Chair. So one is, the applicant has been operating successfully on this site, as you know, you've heard it many times, since 2017. There have been zero parking issues ever, none alleged, no actual. And there's no reason to be, since we're not changing our operations, there's no reason to believe there'd be parking issues going forward with practices. I'm going to talk about the showcases separately. With practices, they're staggered. In fact, I was talking to Coach Town today about this, the practices are staggered every 30 minutes. Age groups are combined strategically to, to manage all that. There just has never been a problem, never to anything close to a parking issue. Now, let's talk about showcase events. Several members of the board did ask about, gosh, how is that going to get it? I didn't really hear much pushback on practices, you know, you could see it, it works. What about these showcase events? So in working with staff to address specifically that concern, we agreed to show, as you heard, as the stipulation, an additional overflow parking area on the plans before we go to the Board of County Commissioners. And since it's up on the screen there, you can see, you can kind of see if you note that gate, Sean coming in from 191st, it's a dark gray rectangle, just to the left or west of left field right there. So just beyond that, you can see an area that is, is grass, it's, it's a soft looking with your eyes. But if you go walk it, in fact, Carl and I did this, went out there and walked it. It's, it's whether it was originally gravel way before we were there or whatever, it is a really hard packed base. It just has kind of scrubbed grass growing on it. And so while we've never had to do this, that would be a completely appropriate place if needed during a showcase to park cars. You can even see that it's about the same size as the gravel area. And then also east, so just east of where I just indicated, on the east side of that entry drive, it's, it's very, very, very similar. So there's a whole nother area. So the point is, if it's found, when we do this trial showcase, if that's, if, if ultimately the Board of County Commissioners allows us to do it, I cannot stress enough the logistical prowess of the town family and their ability to get everybody to comply and they'll make it work. And there's plenty of excess parking and we will show it on the plan. And if it doesn't work, we'll never get to do it again. Couple of quick questions, Chair, that came up that I'm classifying as dealing with parking. One was, you had an observation, Mr. Chairman, being in the area where you said there had been cars parked on both sides of 191st Street. So I can say, there was some comment that came in today, I think that made me go and talk to the towns about this. I can say unequivocally, there's never been any use of that property when the towns had control of it. So going back to 2017, where there was ever, ever, ever an event there that had people parking on 191st. And, but I'm going to go beyond that because that's looking backwards, right? Going forwards, there was some discussion with Mr. Penley about, and I think this was, who do I attribute this to? I think it was, was it Mr. Richardson, whoever was asking about what, what can we regulate in terms of parking? I would say right now, please, if this, if you have any concern about this, we, we don't want and won't let people park on Noll. That'd be totally inappropriate. Frankly, 191st Street, when I was, we were whispering, if you can picture right there, the ditches, right? There's not, that's not a place to park, nobody should be parking there. So I'm not going to get in the middle of Mr. Penley's discussion with you or with Public Works, or whoever has that jurisdiction on what you can require, but we're volunteering, stipulate us please, that nothing related to us can ever park along those streets. It wouldn't be appropriate and hasn't happened back to the main point, Chair, under our watch. Two more questions that I wrote down before concluding. I wrote down the question of, this was Mr. Wingert's question about, yes, the, the, the history. And it, it, it has created miscommunication and confusion. I answered it briefly last time, and I'm going to have the same answer because it is, it's absolutely true. But I want to slow down on this one because I think it breeds distrust. If I'm watching, it's like, gosh, the town's dope rope or whatever, did they say one thing and do another? So I'm going to slow down and we had a long conversation after the meeting about this. Mr. Penley can speak for himself, so I'm not even going to, I'm not going to get to the question of, Mr. Penley, what were you thinking? Or why were you thinking what you wrote in the staff report? That's for him to talk to you about. But I know what, what the towns were about. The towns were about this. If we get the new facility approved, which is the Metcalf facility, the one that's been built, a really nice facility, we don't need the facility, which kind of my usage of the word facility, I thought about this a lot today. I'm like, this is important, these people are trustworthy and they're telling them the truth. Think about that word facility. When you say vacate the facility, to me, that doesn't mean a baseball field. That means a building and that's how they were using that word. They intuitively thought that's what everybody would understand. We're not going to build a building at Noll, which was, which again, was out there. We're going to build a building and, but we won't do that. We'll vacate that idea, vacate that facility if we get a building on Metcalf. Now it's up to you whether you believe that or not. I, my whole career is on reputation and I'm telling you, I'm 100% convinced of what I just said. However, the reason I said it like that is even if, and there's a little back and forth on this with staff, I think it's important for the record, even if somebody didn't believe that, we're having a fresh discussion tonight that you have the privilege and legal authority to weigh the facts on, decide whether a CUP should be granted based on the facts and circumstances. So I probably would go as far as to say it's irrelevant, honestly, but you're the ones that get to decide what you recommend or don't tonight. Last one, Mr. Chair, is Mr. Richardson. You brought up, you asked me to comment a little bit on both golden criteria and also on the, the overarching regulations and standards that apply to this CUP application. So I would say I looked back while you were talking, just I've read it all and I've internalized it. But I'm not even going to go, I will answer individual ones as you want, but for, out of respect for everyone's time in the chamber, I'm just going to say back to you, so people can look for themselves. Those are two separate questions, both are dealt with and you know this, meaning this was your point to draw this out. The staff report from September on page eight goes through each of the golden criteria. And staff ultimately finds in every single case that this proposal, this application meets the golden criteria. The other standard for this board to look at, legal standard, are the standards in Article 23, Section 6C that you had the back and forth about. And that's on page 11 of that original September staff report. And again, it's not wishy-washy. Sometimes there's tough cases where staff investigates everything and says, I could go either way on this, this criterion or what have you. Each one of those staff finds factually, this, these legal standards are met. So if there's anything you'd like me to get into, I trust you'll ask me questions. But with that, I hope I've addressed most, if not all of the questions that we heard. We took it very seriously from this board two months ago. And our respectful request is that you would consider a positive recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners tonight. But I'd happen to answer questions now or later as the proceeding goes on.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant?
Well, I do have a couple and I appreciate your approach on the, on the, this is Rod Richardson, on the golden and the CUP response. I mean, I, I think we have staff's view on that and that's your view. And, and obviously we need to hear from residents and we have other comments off, well, on the record, but not received here directly. So all those things will certainly be considered. But I have a couple of specifics I would like your comments on. And again, I just want your comments on what your reaction would be and as part of my thinking. Number one, from everything I've read about your narrative and whatnot, you're basically saying that between, and I'm just going to plug these dates from one, between October 20th and March 20th, this, this site is inactive. Is that general?
Yeah. And the only reason I'm giving more than a one-word answer, the one-word answer is you're right, that's two words, yes, one word, is because we, we don't have some technical, if Luke and Carlos say I can go out with Nate and hit the ball someday. But absolutely, there, there's no organized, we don't do team practices during those times.
So there would be no revenue producing activities during that period?
That's right, that's right.
If that's the case, would you be willing to stipulate that your condition use permit only authorizes the commercial activities for the other months of the year from, let's say, March 20th through September or through October 19th?
So I want to be a little careful on the exact days you're picking, because I know every year we start in mid-March, which could be any given year. I mean, the calendar, it could be March 12th or March 17th. So I want to be a little careful on that. And in October, I'm trying to think of the last practice we just had, probably knows, but you know, right around the 21st, I'd probably say if we're really going to get that finely chopped, we might just, let's put it at the end of the month. But generally speaking, that's just the way we operate. So we're happy to stand behind that.
All right. Well, my specific question is whether it's the 20th or the end of the month, would you stipulate as part of this, that there is no commercial activity to be done on that, under the condition use permit during that period of time? So that, that those around there that might have a concern, take you in, in good faith on that and say, okay, you know, you've said that's not going to operate and let's just make it a part of the, the deal if there is one.
We've never, that's a fresh question, so I would need a minute, maybe you'd give me a minute after we go through all the questions to talk to Mr. Town.
Take your time on that, but I just want to.
Functionally, so you don't think I'm being wishy-washy? Generally speaking, that's absolutely true, just as a baseball person, my whole, I coached my whole life.
Sure. Well, and throughout your narratives in here, that was very clearly stated. All I'm saying is, that's a great, but let's make it official and not, and, and the way that I suggested, but I know you need to talk to.
I want to see if there's exceptions, but I, in general, it's totally true.
And I'm, I'm not concerned about you playing catch with some kid out there, but I mean, just commercial.
Understood.
The other thing that I want to put out there, from my perspective, I do note that you referenced the kind of a test, a test case, if you will, and to see how it works on some of these things and all that. And I, I'm, I understand that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that really does here for us. But one concern I have is the condition use permit itself length. The one, as I understood, Mr. Penley on Metcalf is a five-year CUP, is that, is that now right?
I believe that was approved at five years.
Five years, okay. So I would have great difficulty supporting a 10-year CUP on this particular project. But I certainly would have to look pretty hard at something that would say, look, if all this works as well as you say it's going to work, despite the obvious misgivings of the neighbors, then I would be thinking about, all right, the proof's in the pudding. A two or three-year condition use permit coming back, let's see how it worked. It also puts some pressure on your client to make sure it works, rather than having to go the other way and force people to come back and say, all right, we want to, we want to cancel your condition use permit right in the middle of whatever your commercial activities are. I'm just saying for me personally, if this were going to be considered, I'd want to see that condition use permit timeframe cut back to say two or three years. I mean, two would be a preference, but no more than three. But with the understanding, if it works out after three years, you want to come back and ask for, for more time than that, five years, 10 years, whatever. But especially given the fact your other one only has five years. So I think 10 years is too long. You don't need to agree or not agree with that, I'm just saying that would be a concern.
I draw a distinction when you're done, you keep going if you have, you're on a roll, roll there, but I'd like to talk.
Right. So, so the, the, the closing for the period we talked about in the winter, so to speak, a shorter condition use permit. You've already answered the third question I had, which was your, you don't have a problem if parking is limited on 191st and, and all. And you've also agreed to the staff stipulations.
That's right.
So that, that goes back around to, to the first two, including stipulation that you're, that you are indeed off the, off the CUP activities during the wintertime, the months, end of, end of October, end of March, we'll say. And a, I'm going to just say a two-year CUP, but I wouldn't bolt on a three-year CUP where you have to come back and we see how this thing is really working. Those are the two, those are two critical issues for me. And I know that's no doubt perceived by your client as heart wrenching. But nevertheless, there are concerns about the square peg in the round hole. But clearly you do have a significant history out there. And I'm looking for a way that both provides protection to the surrounding landowners of the concerns they obviously have, which I'm sure we're going to hear about. But at the same time, provides your folks an opportunity to indeed prove up what they can do. And certainly I'm fully aware there is no perfect operation. But by the same time, nobody here has an absolute right to absolute quiet. So it's just the way it is. There's always elbow room in there. So I'm not saying how I'll vote on this because it depends on what the other board members have to say. I want to hear that. I want to hear from the neighbors, how they feel about it. I've already read all the other comments, so that's it for me.
Chair, may I briefly touch on the one point on the term of the SUP, CUP I should say? Because we haven't had a chance to dialogue on this yet. Comparison to the Metcalf facility, which is in its initial, you know, it's just, it's just really just opened last year. Typically, I'm thinking across jurisdictions where I get to, you know, 20-something jurisdictions, I, I get the privilege to be in. And pretty typically, with some exceptions, a, a first CUP or SUP term is, can be shorter. And once you've gone through that with success, meaning not a bunch of issues, right? Where you've been called in or major problems, and I would classify this as there's no issues and problems of, that have been cited, you're given the opportunity to get something longer, kind of like what you were saying, if, hey, do two to three years and you get longer. Well, a lot of people, after you do the first, you, you get something longer. Now, is that a hill to die on, being totally transparent? No, they just want to do baseball, they're going to have great operations. But I will be remiss just putting it out there because I'm sure there'll be dialogue from the dais on this. It's not costless to go through this process. It's, it can be nerve, to be honest with you, it can be nerve wracking, even when you've done everything right. Money, motions, uncertainty. And so I would just ask, as you consider this issue, that we were asking for the privilege of, like a lot of jurisdictions, getting a little bit longer this time, going 10 years. So if, if it wasn't going to be 10, going less than five, we, we, we'd be, not a hill to die on, but we'd be disappointed to go backwards on that. But I heard your remarks and I appreciate it.
Ms. Kelly Ross, do you know what the, how many feet it is from home plate to basically where you would say the overflow parking would be? Assuming that these are going to be high school showcase baseball.
So let's do it again and I'm going to see if I'm going to phone a friend, because we could do that on Ainge really fast. But you, so home plate, home plate.
To the, you know, basically left field where you're paying that over, because it's, you know, if you're talking at the showcases, I'm not sure I'd park my car out there.
We're not, we're not, we're not hitting, we're not.
Or the showcases, you're not going to be hitting out there?
No. No, no live hitting. That's not what that field is for.
And that's good.
That fence, I think, is, this is going on a limb, I'm pretty sure I'm right, that fence to help you, it's like 290, I think, 285, 290, something like that to left field pole from the plate. That kind of gives you a little sense, hopefully.
Thanks. Mr. Peterson, this is Ken Sherman Smith. Can I review page three of the current staff report? Mr. Peterson, this is Ken Klingon Smith. Can I review page three of the current staff report with you?
Sure.
Um, revised stipulation number three, we've got 56, 80, but the final answer is 60. Is that accurate?
So in my, 60 and 90 are the two uses and we've agreed to the stipulation 60 and 90. That's right.
Perfect. And that's the same for stipulation four, the 120 is 90 and then that regard.
Precisely.
All right. Thank you.
You were saying that does go back to total people?
Exactly as written. We reviewed that with staff and that exact language, yes, is acceptable.
Any other questions, the applicant?
Yeah, this is Dan Foyle. Uh, so I remember from the first meeting, uh, from the last time we were in this, that now there, is there a line of sight from any of the homes to like where the kids are actually playing ball?
I'll answer it from the applicant's side. I don't know if staff wants to say something. Absolutely not when you're, when you're us, when you're, when you're a coach or where you're a player. I've never been in the homes to the south or to the west, but I would tell you usually if I can't see them, they can't see me.
Thank you. I seem to remember there were some berms or something like that, or, and then the, the trees on the south side seemed to block it.
It's, and I'm sorry, I didn't want to repeat myself from before, but you're making a good point. It's, um, whatever I exactly said, approximately 10 feet plus or minus two feet along the west side where we are lower, on top of that is vegetation and trees, including evergreens. And then to the south, um, it's slightly less than that, but we're still dug out where there's a, it's up, that goes up on a ridge as you go south. And then there's 10 acres of growth protecting that house to the south.
Dan, this is Ken Klingon Smith. I actually stood up there and I am in agreement with Kurt.
Thank you.
This is Fred Winger. Mr. Peterson, um, the, the applicant, it says, you know, that, that you're the applicant, but, but really the applicant's Luke Town, correct?
We, we always just when we're involved in files do that. So there's nothing special about that. Yes. The applicant is actually an entity that owns the, owns the, uh, the land and the field, which is, um, LC Town LLC. Luke and Carla, LC Town.
Says in our document, the landowner is Luke Town.
It's LC Town LLC.
Okay.
Yeah, I just.
Um, and, and I believe when we were here in 2021, Luke Town was, was here and spoke.
And he was actually here last time. He just, he's coaching tonight and couldn't get out of it. So he, he was here in 2021 and he was here, uh, in September. He just sends his regrets. I should have said at the beginning, I forgot. This is very important to him, but, uh, again, I guess what he did.
He is the applicant, Mr. Peterson, but he's not here tonight.
Well, wait a second. The, the applicant, to be clear, I'm going to, let's slow down because I felt a little aggression there. The applicant is what I said, the applicant is the property owner, which is LC Town comma LLC, that, that owns the ground. There's a wonderful married couple that, there's a business person and a baseball person. The business person is sitting here to my right, which is Carla Town. So she is just as much, you know, the owner of the ownership entity as, as Luke. So Luke sends his regrets again, but Carla's here and definitely can, uh, fill the shoes.
So earlier we discussed the, the minutes of the meeting in July of 2021 and and you have your interpretation of the word facility. You do understand the concern that the board might not have had that same, you were not here that night, correct?
I was not here, but at the same time, baseball people would know too, the fields out at the Metcalf facility as designed and approved. If you look at the field depth, everyone would know. And I'm, by the way, this is, let me say what this isn't. This isn't like, man, don't you know baseball? It's not that, but it's to corroborate the truthfulness of the time and that it's a miscommunication. The fields out there have fences that are 175 feet. I could be off by 10 feet, 15 feet, something like that. Those are not fields appropriate to do what the field at Noll does. I mean, ABA would be upper, I don't know what we would do. We have to have that depth to do many of the things we do, especially with some of the older kids. So the idea that ever there was the idea that we were vacating Noll, impossible, couldn't, couldn't have happened. So I regret big time that there was some level of miscommunication. I don't know if Mr. Pendley has anything else to add to that, but I truly believe it was miscommunication. It's just, that's all I can say. It would make no sense to get rid of the Noll facility. They couldn't operate. It's very important.
The verbiage says vacate and the CUP was not applied for to renew. So, I mean, I think it was.
Um, and that was, and that was also, that was a mistake. Mr. Pendley reached out, um, expired in 22. Lot of things going on, didn't apply on time. I've seen this happen again and again and again, and all sorts of jurisdictions. The key thing from my perspective as a professional, Mr. Pendley can speak for the county, is immediately when someone's notified, do they take action and apply and go through the process? And we immediately stepped into that. So that had nothing to do with the 21 sort of proceedings. Just a human, human making a mistake, not seeing the date.
And Kelly Ross, I would say that when we as a board member, we're looking at the entire CUP. So we weren't just focused on a facility on the, uh, CUP that was on Metcalf. We were looking at the, the entire, you know, thing. So I think to, you know, belittle it down to just facility, I think we were all aware that it was a CUP with operating this business on this property in its entirety. So we probably just full up to agree, disagree on that, but I think that's, I can speak for myself. That is, we were looking at the entire CUP because that's how we're, we're supposed to look at every detail of it.
Because I know it, I can tell, you know, we're humans. I can tell body language that's frustrating. What I'm saying is it was miscommunication and we can agree to disagree. That was what I said in my remarks, but the key part is we have facts about this property and the track record at this property in front of us legally with standards that Mr. Richardson called out. The golden criteria and the regulations, all of which staff says we've met. So I understand what you're feeling, but the legal facts are about this property.
And I just want one other clarification, um, just because I was on the planning commission and this is probably something you don't know. But it was very important to us because one of the issues in the unincorporated area has been the problem that we don't have a ve, a good vehicle for complaints for the residents. And it was not until January of 2020, well, maybe February of 2023, that we actually had a formal vehicle for complaints. So prior to this year, there really hasn't been an avenue where people could go online, submit something, provide information, all they could rely on was calling the staff. So I just want you to know that because.
Sounds like a good development. Yeah, that's.
That was a big, you know, and we, that was something that was important to us is it, it's time the residents have something to go to and
Smart.
So I just want to let you know that because I'm sure you will wear that.
I appreciate your expertise.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Mr. Peterson, um, you, you're obviously very thorough tonight and I appreciate that. Do you know the reasons that this application was first applied for, for CUP originally back in?
2017.
Why was, why did the board then deny it? I wasn't on the board then.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't here either. So I can't really comment on it. Sean, you weren't here. I don't know if anybody has the institutional knowledge that they want to share, but it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if we have reasons, there's a summary sheet. If I, board request, I could try to provide some summary as to why the zoning board recommended it now and why the B O C C approved.
Please, if you have it there.
Yeah. Uh, so in 2017, the, uh, the zoning board recommendation was to deny the application. Was remanded. So went to the, uh, Board of Zoning, uh, Board of County Commissioners, it was remanded back to the zoning board. Zoning board again, recommended denial. The zoning board reasons for recommendation and denial. This is too intensive a business use, uh, for a conditional use in the RER district. The business doesn't fit the character of the very rural residential neighborhood. The business use will generate too much traffic on a gravel road. I think that was referring to Noll. And at that time, that built, the building was proposed. Dust from the additional traffic on a gravel road is a safety issue. So those are the reasons why the zoning board recommended denial.
Thank you. And if we add the showcase events, aren't we really expanding what was denied then? I mean, that was denied in 2017. This board denied that. Sean, what was the vote on that? Do you recall?
Uh, it was denied 4-0 by the zoning board and.
So the board unanimously denied it and now we're asking for an expansion.
Not really, because that had the.
The showcase, the showcase events wouldn't be considered an expansion?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, oh, go ahead, please.
This, this can, there is a building on it. On the first CUP that came through that got denied. When we reviewed that and I had not, I was not in attendance at the meeting, but I was on the board at the time. The, there is a whole, the whole building that's on Metcalf was actually on this property. So I would look at the showcase as not necessarily an expansion because we actually got rid of the whole building.
Okay.
Component of it.
But it would be an expansion of the use that we've talked about at length tonight. It's been used in a certain way with no complaints. It would be a significant expansion on that.
The showcase?
Yes.
That's, that would be to me, something different that's being added.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman.
And Kelly Ross, I guess I'll ask you since you gave up the information, you're a baseball fanatic too and coach and whatever. Um, I'm a past baseball mom, so I have had my own experience. So I guess my, what I'm having difficulty with is whenever my son went to showcases, they were large because you're not going to get scout, you're not going to get scouts, you're not going to get a lot of scouts. And so many of them, they rented out the T-bones facility to host them. My son did go out of town with them. I think anybody who's involved in competitive baseball, they understand the cost. It's just another additional cost. It's, you know, the same.
Those that can afford it, to be clear.
I agree, but I'm trying to figure out how you're going to get, if you're limiting it, how it's even your model makes sense because how are you going to get scouts to come for that limited amount of people? And you're going to be charging your players for this. So I'm sort of, that doesn't jive with my past experience. The showcases tend to be large scale, whether you went to something like the PBR or, um, those one, yeah. Yep. You know, but even the ones in town, they were all large ones held out at the big ball facility. So I, you know, I'm, if this is something that, you know, if I'm strongly against, I'm not even sure I understand why you would want to push this because it doesn't, from a business standpoint, other than it's just more income for ABA, because I don't see it being.
Yeah.
I don't really see it being that appropriate for the kids. They're not going, and how are you even going to get scouts when you're like, they're not going to take a whole day off to come and see a handful of kids. So that's just, I mean, unless you can change my mind, but my, my past experience is like, that's, I wouldn't sign, I wouldn't pay for it.
I would feel the same way as you. I'm going to tell you.
So.
You are, you are, you are, you're, you're, before you know, I have more to say, but you are right. In that your past experience actually proves the whole point. And it doesn't mean you're, it doesn't mean you're wrong. I'm saying everything you just said, set right here. That is exactly what Luke and Carla are trying to provide an alternative to. And here's what.
No, I'm questioning the motives.
What's that?
You're, I'm questioning the motives.
It's dramatically less expensive. There's cost to doing this, but it's dramatically less expensive by design. Um, which really isn't totally the purview of this board, but it happens to be true, um, by design. But your question of how can it be smaller? Cause again, it's a lot smaller. It's just using the Metcalf facility in here. And how does this work? And how do you get scouts to come? And I say this really proudly. I think you do know Luke Town, but I'll say to everybody else, you, you probably don't know Luke Town. He's a professional scout. And he has the most unbelievable relationships with all the regional colleges and universities. And why do people, why would people come? Why would they take a day and come do it? Because frankly, it's the Luke Town ABA philosophy, because when they get students there, they, they usually don't flunk out. They don't do drugs. All the things that we'll start Sunday with our special curriculum in the wintertime where we have a classroom at the Metcalf facility. He sits down and we talk about again, drugs, alcohol, how you treat people, bullying. I should have known all cyber. We go through all these things. Luke Town raises up, yeah, on the baseball side. Um, softball is really important too, but I'm a baseball guy. Raises up young men. I, I didn't spend 20 minutes doing this because I don't want you to say, Kurt, I don't care. You're taking all my time. I could do it for 20 minutes. That's why those scouts will come in a smaller setting and we can charge a lot less. And it's a fundamental about, thing about who the towns are and what they want to do. But what you said is reality now. There's nothing like what we're talking about.
Yep. Any, any other questions, the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chairman.
Appreciate it. Okay. Since this is actually a continuance, we, um, don't necessarily have to have a public opinion or a public comment section. However, um, with the folks that are here and the folks that have signed up and taken their time to, to be here, I'd like to, um, have a public comment section. Um, if every, if the folks, when you come up, if you can say your name and address as well as limit your comments to three minutes, uh, would be appreciated.
Thank you, Chair. The first name on the list is Maureen.
Hello, my name's Marina Huska and I live at 19340 Noll Avenue in Stillwell, Kansas. I live directly to the south of the baseball facility. And I would just like to, before I forget to mention this, when in the report, the staff report, when it said that the facility would be vacated, there was no building on it. So therefore it's a facility. It wasn't a building that's going to be vacated. The new place has a building on it at that facility, which the lawyer just mentioned that. So I think that is kind of like very misleading. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is why, or I have a question, why on earth, if the conditional use permit is expired, why on earth is it still being allowed to be used? Um, that's one thing I don't understand. Uh, maybe there's some kind of rule, but I just don't understand that point. Um, and I would invite any of you to come to my house and listen to a practice. The, there is a hill there, but it carries over the hill. And I hear the bats constantly. I hear the coaches yelling, encouraging the kids or whatever, and it's constant. And just because it's, you know, during nine AM to nine PM, people are there. They're outside. People are retired. People work rotating shift. And who's to say that it's just going to be limited to those times? And then what's going to be asked more? This way, the showcase is more this time, which we thought this was all done because the other building got approved. And I think a lot of you were under that impression as well. And I just think it's, it's, to me, it's personal because I have been there for decades. My mother was there prior to me. And it's just a precious place in the, the baseball facility is not the right place. That piece of property is not the right place for this type of facility. So I ask you for consideration, uh, listening to the, uh, local members and voting, um, how you feel is right and how it should be. The other board members for the previous, um, zoning meetings were all voted down. And like I said, in my comments that I emailed again this time, the miraculously it was approved at the B O C C. And I think all of us are very confused on why. Thank you for your time.
Don V.
Uh, Don Vukas, uh, you want my address?
Yes, please.
Uh, 5801 West 194th Street, Stillwell. Uh, I just don't think we should lose sight of the, of the cup being expired. Everybody knew that, uh, they were supposed to vacate that. That's why it expired. There's no way they would have let that expired if that was the case. So we should not lose sight of that. I know they don't want to talk about that too much now because everybody that was at the board, even neighbors agreed that, hey, okay, now they're moving up on Metcalf. That's great. We, we like it there. It's fine. So if that was the case, they would not have let that cup expire. Uh, two is, um, I believe, uh, you were saying that you guys don't do practices in October at all. Uh, you should have a picture. Is it? Okay. Well, in October, I think you should have a picture late at night. They said no lights. Well, they're using their car lights. I sent a picture in. They're using car lights at night up at the baseball field behind the, uh, uh, the, uh, catcher place. So they're using their cars for lights. So let's be honest. They need to be honest about this. So I don't see the honesty that he keeps proclaiming that, oh, we're so great. We won't do that. Look what's going on. So that's just a continuance. It's going to keep going on and on and on. So, uh, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Dennis.
I don't think I could get everything in three minutes to answer everything that he was, you know, I wish I'd have been able to one-on-one him. Dennis Miskovitz, 6416 West 194th Street. Let me, let me address the traffic first. The whole deal with the stop sign is because at a meeting that they had, I complained because of a guy almost, two, two kids pulled out of there. I was coming down 191st, heading west, right at the entrance to that, that gravel road there. And two of them shot out right in front of me. I ran off of the road to miss them. Okay. Two minutes later, I'm going back behind them. They're gone. I mean, they're flying. Here comes another one behind me, this far off of my truck. I was pulling over to let him go, but I didn't have to because he flew around me. They race up and down. I was pulling over to let him go, but I didn't have to because he flew around me. They race up and down those streets and 194th Street too, that I live on. I clocked, not clocked, I mean, I'm six, 74 years old. I've been driving for six years. I know when two trucks are racing each other at 70 miles an hour on my street. So I jumped in my truck and followed them and they, where they pull in, guess, they race up and down those streets. Okay. First of all, put 10,000, 9,000, 2,000 vehicles on that street. And you got a traffic jam. Let us know when they do that so that we can contact all the neighbors, tell them to keep their, their dogs, their cats, their horses, their kids, their old, the old people that walk up and down those street often because somebody's going to get killed. Well, I can go on and on and on. Nobody has ever parked on 191st Street. That's completely untrue. Carol called the police. The sheriff came out there. He said, well, there's nothing I can do. They parked on both sides. So either you don't know what you're talking about, or you don't know what happened. One of the two. Uh, you know, I can go on and on and on. My, my question here is why are we here? Again, we've been fighting this for seven to eight years. We don't want him there. Keep him off. Stop this. He's just going to come back. You're offering him a one-year deal or two-year deal. It doesn't matter. Next year, he's going to be back. I got so many people coming in here for these staircases. Guys, I gotta have a concession stand with restrooms, which is another issue. The restrooms, they're so unsightly. They don't really need them because the kids go over in the neighbors to urinate. He's got pictures of it. Okay. So no instances, there's traffic situations out there all the time. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Greg Dean.
Greg Dean, 5921 West 194th Street. I really appreciate the time and, and effort you guys put into this and the consideration of our position. I do need to apologize because this is really kind of all our fault. We screwed up. We relied on the staff to put the stipulation in that this was going to be vacated and they didn't get in as a stipulation. So here we are fighting this again. That's our fault. We, we informed the staff that the Rod Rock Company is putting 1,200 new homes in, less than two miles east of this operation. And we'd like to know what the traffic is going to be with regard to those 1,200 new homes. And the staff can't do that for us because they haven't had the, the zoning or the approval of the project yet. So we don't know how much traffic is going to be on there. And then we, we sort of relied on the board members who last time we were here said, well, we can cut this off at seven o'clock. That'll give you some relief in the evening when you're sitting out. And that's apparently gone by the board. So I apologize for putting you in this position. I know how difficult it is when you have to balance the needs of the neighbors and the neighborhood against somebody new who wants to come in and change things. Um, and I understand the golden rule and I have a different view of it, but, um, it just seems to me that under these circumstances, um, I'm just really impressed with the questions you've asked, with the position you've taken and with the effort you've gone to, to protect our interests. So I hope you can see your way through to keeping that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last in-person attendee. We do have one person on Zoom that would like to speak. Angela. Angela, if you can hear us, you can go ahead with your comments.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't know I had to unmute. Okay. In addition to, um, sharing my concerns with all of the others who have spoken previously, I would like to share that, um, I did not realize that we had the opportunity to share our complaints for the last few years with anyone. We've always had issues with people. And we've always called the sheriff if we've had a problem. And, um, we've also had our problems with theft and, and those kinds of things that we've called the sheriff for, but we've had problems with people parking on Noll to watch the baseball practice. And, um, I've driven by at night and also seen the, um, practice going on with the lights on and the practice going on with the benefit of the lights at the facility. So how are things to be enforced on weekends or after hours when the police have no authority to police that? And who is going to enforce that for us? And I don't believe that it falls on the citizens of Stillwell to be on watch and um, tell or police those, um, things for a business that doesn't belong in a residential setting in the first place. I also can tell when the facility is being used. Um, people always seem to forget about me. I'm in between, the Huskas and the Stodmires. They always forget that I'm here, but my property is between those two. And, um, I sit out on my deck at night and, um, I can hear the practices too. I can tell you when they're happening. I've also been here for four decades, so, um, I'm used to my life here and I enjoy it. I am opposed to, um, the continuation and approval of the CUP. I also assumed, silly me, that when, um, the CUP, excuse me, was approved on Metcalf, that, um, this one would be vacated. And I also do not understand why the one was allowed to continue when it had expired. Um, in addition, if a CUP is, um, not a permanent fixture, why is the one here on Metcalf finished with a parking and, um, paved parking spaces and the one over here is just gravel and added on to, and the one down here is for five years. And the one over here is proposed for 10 years. And yet the one over here is for five years and the one here for 10 years is only supposed to be for gravel and et cetera. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to do the showcases over here on Metcalf.
Thank you.
For the record, I just, I don't think that the location 190 person Noll is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Any other folks for opinion on? I think we have one gentleman. Yes, please. Just state your name and address, please.
I, I'm Ryland Griffin. I live at 5501 West 194th Street, just south of the Huskas. And I just want to say thank you so much for you guys asking questions and jilging in and the way this is going and everything. I really just hope that, you know, we can figure out what to do with this. Cause I do agree. I thought too, that the place was going to be vacated from the 2021 thing. And I was also there at the 2017 when it got denied the zone board meeting. So I was really shocked that, you know, that got approved then too, but I just wanted to just get that few words in there and appreciate it. So you guys are doing great.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? All right. We'll go ahead and close the, uh, public comment section. And, uh, we can have, um, discussion among the board. Um, before we do that, I did want to address a couple of the questions that had come up. Sean, I think, um, I kind of, I'll just make a couple of comments and then let Sean kind of step in. The facility versus building versus property. Um, kind of reminds me of a racetrack conversation related to member and owner. Um, so I could totally see that that created a lot of issues with residents and the zoning board. So I think for all of us, we need to be very specific moving forward on no, no assumptions that owner and member and facility and building and property. The second thing is I think regardless if this is a renewal or a new conditional use permit, it's still a conditional use permit that's being asked for the property. So I think if we took the name, took the word renewal off of it, it makes it look like a brand new one, which it is. The renewal actually attaches it to the history of everything else that's happened at the property. Um, so I don't really see that as a sticking point because whether it's renewal or new, it's still a conditional use permit. Um, and then I don't know if you want, do you have any comments on the car lights? Since that was a complaint that came in?
Yes. Uh, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff, uh, staff did receive among those, uh, comments that you, um, we handed out to the zoning board that are part of the record. One of those emails, uh, did include a photo, uh, with headlights on the field. Uh, the, we forwarded that to the applicant to get their response. The, the initial thought was number one, they didn't know when it was taken. So they don't know what the date, but that photo was not indicating anyone playing on the field with the applicant had indicated there. They just had headlights on the field where a player and a coach were looking for a necklace that was lost in the grass. Nobody was on the field. So just to respond to that, there's no, they, they weren't using headlights to practice on the field. So that's the response I guess from staff on that. And the applicant can answer anything further regarding that specific request.
And, and my comments on the conditional use versus renewal, those consistent with your understanding as well?
Yes. I mean, we, again, we staff, there, there was a conditional use, use permit approved for this property. You could call it an amendment, really. It's a, it, it, yes, it has expired. It is a conditional use permit. It requires the same process. It's a public hearing. Um, yeah, really, whether it's a new CUP or amended CUP or a renewal of a CUP, it's the same process. So.
Thank you.
And remind me your name? It was Don. Okay. Um, thank you, Sean. Discussion. Who would like to start?
I have something to say. Kelly Russ. I, I agree. This, we, we are tasked with the square peg in the round hole. But the, and without getting in the weeds of the details, because everybody can spin things differently. Um, Mr. Peterson looks at that from a time standpoint, maybe only 50% of the allotted time is used. Unfortunately, that 50% of time is when everybody else wants to be outside in the prime time. So the time it's not being used is probably irrelevant. So I don't really look at that as like a selling point. So if we try and get out of the weeds of this, I look at two facts or three, actually. One is I do think, you know, lessons learned for the board, for staff, for everybody, but there is accountability here for what took place at the last board meeting and the words that were said and with vacating the facility. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but you brought up a good point that there was not a building. So there shouldn't have been that confusion. And, you know, that needs to hold a lot of water. The other thing is, one of the problems is, and I've always had a hard time with this as well. And that's why I pushed to have, you know, a complaint form online is here, we've got something that's expired and nobody's doing anything about it. They're in violation of their CUP now by being out there. And the neighbors, that's what the neighbors are saying, but yet we're hearing nothing, but they run an up and up program. And I would love to take a Pollyannaish approach to things, but we're talking, you know, we also have to be realistic. And I will, you know, the county does have to grow and stuff, but we have to be very careful about certain doors that we open as the county grows as well. And I was really proud of what we all went through to get this placed on Metcalf, on a more of a commercial place away from residents, because it is hard to police these type of venues. And, you know, for one, and we just need to really look at as Stillwell grows. Um, and all those other new homes east, that's a huge point with increased traffic too. And it's also very relative. The traffic study can say it can hold up to 10,000, but if people are used to walking on a street that has one car per hour. I mean, again, that's all the stuff we have to balance and juggle. So stats are one thing, but then common sense, reality and what we're used to is kind of another, and we have to kind of bridge that. But I'm one to say that I just really feel like commercial entities, I, I'm not opposed to small things that are already defined in our county, you know, a home, you know, where it's like one employee, there's not going to be more than one or two car, you know, there's limited cars. It's very well defined. Um, these things are really open and the confusing part too is we hold, when they built the site on Metcalf, it was, you know, do they have the right ADA parking lots? Is it, you know, just everything was fine tuned. This one is kind of being thrown open to the one, you know, to not requiring that kind of stuff. So there is some confusion. And I just think we need to go back and look at if it's a commercial entity, there should be very strict standards. And it, you know, if it's a commercial entity, maybe it does need to have, you know, paved parking, needs to have the ADA facilities and needs to have a bathroom. And that will quit some of this confusion, but I'm, I'm just, I, I stand kind of how I was before that. I don't think this is the right type of, uh, facility, uh, no matter how Pollyannaish we're going to think that they're golden kids, which even at the best case scenario, I just don't think this is the right place and it doesn't fit the, in my opinion, the golden criterias. So.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, um, I guess I would preface this by saying that since I've lived for 35 years on rural property south of 199th Street between Lackman and Flum. Uh, if they wanted to put this by me, I wouldn't want it either for all the reasons you folks have said. But that is, uh, that is not why we're up here. This is a quasi judicial group that is charged with making decisions, not on what we think ought to be, but what we think the evidence and the facts support. Uh, I suspect there will be considerable disagreement on some of the things I'm going to say here, but I'm going to put it out there. I think that, um, first of all, as I suggested to Mr. Peterson, um, I would support this and I would, would not be adverse to making a motion at the appropriate time to see if it even gets a second to support this based on the stipulations that have been agreed to. Plus, uh, and I'm going to say a, uh, a maximum, we talked about two or three years. I'm going to say a two-year conditional use permit. And the fact that there would be no, uh, commercial activity out there between October 30th and March 15th. Basically taking the applicant at its words. I know as Mr. Peterson correctly pointed out, uh, there is an expense to this and telling anybody to put the money out there, uh, you know, and then have the risk that it's going to be jerked and after two years. But the, the risk is there anyway. If they do this, and if it was 10 years, it could still be jerked if they violate the rules. But under the circumstances, um, if this were being located near me, I would say, well, you know, this all sounds great. What you tell us you're going to be able to do, we have some history on this. You understand the concerns of the neighbors. Uh, I want to see how it actually works. So if it gets, uh, if it, if it doesn't sound very good during the first six months or however you're, you're operating during the time you're operating, if there were problems with any of the things that have been described, any of the things that have been described here. Uh, then you've got an opportunity the following season to correct those before you have to come back before us in the BOCC uh, to bring it back for renewal. I think that's a reasonable solution to this. However, as I fully agree, if I live there, no, I wouldn't want it either. I, but I have to say, having lived in the country for 35 But I have to say, having lived in the country for 35 years, I've been, you know, I, I sit it on my deck and I hear, you know, I hear the, the trains four or five miles away, I hear the Spring Hill Band practicing, which is four miles away. There's a cow calf operation that's been out there longer than I have since back to the late 1800s, when the, when they're weaning the calves. You can't sleep at night from the nose, I hear the aircraft, I hear ag noises, mowing, cultivators, you know, everything, I hear 199th Street traffic, which is getting heavier all the time. I hear kids playing, and one of my more distant neighbors has a rock band that they, they have decided they're going to practice once a week, and you know. So, so from my personal perspective, which I bring to this table, is like, you know, how much is, how much should you have to put up with if you live out in the country? You know, if I were the king of the world, I'd say I want it quiet, by God, and I don't want any of these calves, I don't want baseball people, I just want it quiet, I don't want any development, I don't want but that's, that's not what we are here for, because there are standards which the staff has studied, the staff is making a direct representation to us, that, that they believe they've met the golden criteria. They've met the CUP right criteria, which I asked Mr. Pendley directly. And I haven't heard any evidence suggest they haven't. If I had, I'd be the first one to say, you know, the, the only thing that concerns me that really was a legitimate is, it's, I can hear this, they're going to be, they're going to be people out there, they're going to be noisy. And the question in my mind, is that going to be enough to deny people the, the reasonable use of their property, or deny them the quiet enjoyment of their property? I, I don't know, that's a personal thing, everybody has a different tolerance for noise and, and what goes on there. I, the fact that this is commercial, obviously it's commercial. I don't think that, that's any reason to say no, I mean, that's what the whole idea of a conditional use permit is to allow the square peg to try to fit into the round hole. I think a 10-year CUP on anybody's motion is absolutely objectionable to me, I don't think I could support anything more than three, but my motion, if I made it, would be for two. But it seems to me, if, if we also included in that some clarifications that, okay, no, no car lights on the field, no handheld megaphones or micro, you know, that sort of thing. There are things that could be done to resolve that, so that it would be limited, and then everybody would have to strap in and see how it works for a couple of years. And it may well be that it gets deep six after that. But under the circumstances, the Board of County Commissioners have also indicated, apparently, I wasn't around on this board then, that they really don't have an objection to this, and I think we have to say, alright, well, if that's the case, you may be looking at a choice between a, a 10-year CUP and a two-year CUP. And that's something that, that concerns me, and also I think it's a good idea to limit if they agree to it, that there'd be no activity under the CUP for that period of time we, I discussed a minute ago, say between the end of October and, and the middle of March. I don't think it's appropriate for us to critique at all their business model, that's their decision, that's their money, they go broke, it's their problem. I don't think it's our place to discuss whether somebody is going to go broke or how they get people there. I'm not saying it's not a concern or a question that people would think about, I just don't think it's what we're supposed to do here. We're supposed to, to make our decision based on the evidence that's brought before us. And I think at this stage of the game, what I really hear, hearing more than anything else is there's, there are traffic issues, which will be true as this area develops, there are going to be more traffic. I would hope we could arrange for no parking on Noll and, and 191st. But aside from that, it looks like about everything has been done out there that you could reasonably do, except for the owner of this facility having heard what we had to say, to decide if this were approved, are they willing to back their bet up for two years, risk coming back and having us all say, well, we sure made a mistake, and you're gone? Of course, it's up to the BOCC ultimately, not us, anyway, we're just a recommending body. But I say these comments for the BOCC as well, because I want, if this happens to go up there, no matter what our motion is, I want them to hear from me personally, that my view is that under no circumstances should this thing be approved for beyond three years, and I think two's more appropriate as a test to make sure this thing works. That's a pretty, that's a pretty stiff test. And I think everybody could then feel pretty comfortable that if it's not working, it's going to be tough to get past this again. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. No.
No. Sorry.
No, no.
Mr. Chairman. Fred Winger, I've, I wonder requests, you know, I guess as I think about this, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the golden criteria, and I think it's one of the the key things that as a board we're supposed to use to make these determinations, right? So we didn't have the revised golden criteria in our packet for today, but we had back in August, August 30th, can I get this map put up? Of the zoning that's around the property from August? It just shows the zoning of the properties around this parcel. It was on page nine of our our agenda from September?
Or just pull the aim, aim up?
A map is fine. So, while you're doing that, Sean, so golden criteria number one is whether the use would be consistent with zoning and uses of nearby properties. Okay, so this is a commercial venture that Luke Town LLC has been operating and will continue to operate, and I think the board back in 2017 pointed this out, that they had concerns that this didn't fit the golden criteria.
I think this microphone, this is Sean Pendley Planning Staff, I'm looking for that presentation.
That one right there, it's the Stafford Port E3, next, that one right there, yep.
Okay.
So the question was. Age nine, please.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the red, I believe, is commercial property, the purple, I believe, is industrial planned research, development, light industrial.
Correct.
So whether the use would be consistent with zoning and uses of nearby properties. We have a, a for-profit business operating 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Whether we restrict the hours or not, I, I don't believe on golden criteria number one, we've we've met that, we've met that criteria. As we look at some of the other, you know, is it compatible with the character of the neighborhood? You know, is, it's a commercial venture. You know? And I kind of feel like the, the substation is a little bit of an anomaly, because we, we have to have electricity, so it's not really an option, but I have concerns, I have concerns about this is an expansion of the initial CUP. The operating hours, if we were to approve it, I'd be more supportive of, you know, it closing maybe at 5 o'clock, Monday through Friday. You know, if, if it was in a, in, in an industrial park, or if it was on Metcalf around other commercial businesses across from the church, next to Napa Auto Parts, or former site of a, of a restaurant, you know, the hours could be expanded hours, but I, I do have concerns. I have some concerns, I have a number of concerns, but those would be some of the concerns that I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Dan Foyle, so I'm really torn about this, I live, as you probably know, very close to the one on 191st Street, which is ironically enough, I'm 6,000 feet from the one we're talking about now. And I'm 732 feet from home plate of the one that is behind me. Now, the one behind me is line of sight. There's no break of trees, there's no rise, I mean, I'm basically, I mean, I'm slightly below it, but I mean, I can hear everything that comes from it. And I got to say, at first, I was a little bothered by the noise. But I also, you know, I, I like baseball, you know, I have a son that, although he's only 10, he's not very good at baseball, he does play it. And so I, 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 I see the need, and I see the desire for a place to go for have kids to play. I also, I think from the pro side of this, that's kind of, you know, I can see the need. I, I see that it's, when I drive by it every day, it almost has, once you pass the neighborhoods and that one house, because it's across from the KCPN L substation there, it almost has a commercial feel right there, and yet we are in rural, and then you go to Dave Webb's property, and I mean, Dave's really kind of the other closest neighbor. So I see a pro is like, what else is this property going to be used for in the future? I don't think it's probably something that's going to be real ripe for development, with the power lines running right through the middle of it. The cons, having lived close to this other property, I think there's a lot of things that, that went through the conditional use permit earlier, where like they had to plant a certain number of cedar trees for a sound break, and they did. And they're two foot tall, and they've been there for four years, and they're 18 inches wide and two feet tall. And I still believe there's things that were not done to that property based on what they agreed to in the cup. And so I think there's very little that we've done to govern the enforcement of the conditional use permits as a, as a whole. The bigger thing to me is that there's so much development going on out in this area, with the rod rock development coming up on Mission and so forth, that the traffic is going to be a lot more than it is now, and I really just feel like this area does not need any more traffic, so in a nutshell, I, I do not believe I am in support of it as it is written. I do believe with some of the things that Rod said, maybe, you know, a shorter conditional use permit, I would be open to to, and especially now that we have the, the complaint vehicle in place where people can voice their concerns. And the, you know, that would give the owner a chance to react to those and so forth. But as it sits right now, I cannot say that I would be in support of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is Ken. My thoughts on it are, yes, this is an RUR, we do have commercial businesses that are operating in the unincorporated, incorporated area of Johnson County, in an RUR zoned area. The baseball field that Dan had referenced over east of 191st and Mission is actually in an RN1 zoning that we approved. So I think from a zoning perspective, and looking at the, this is a commercial business in an RUR is, is, is challenging for me, because we've already approved that for an athletic training complex on the same street down the road. I think from a regulations and a standards perspective, I believe that the staff has done a really good job working with the applicant to kind of meet the, the facts, if you will, about you know, whether we like it or don't like it, I think when you look at the standards and regulations for the facility, it is there. There are no speakers, there are no lights. Our biggest issue in declining this previously in 17 was related to the building and putting the building that now is on Metcalf, so we're really looking at, this is just a baseball field. And again, the commercial component of it, we have precedent that we've already set in the county. I am not really supportive of the showcase, I don't think this property is support, has the infrastructure to support a showcase. I respect the fact that we've limited the number of people, but I, I feel confident that there is a parking issue. With 191st, with Noll, I'm very supportive of the no parking. Working with Luke to make sure that there's no parking on the streets, so I, I, I don't believe the infrastructure would support something like a showcase. I am supportive of a lower CUP, I was actually thinking more of a five-year CUP, only because there is a complaint, formal complaint process that was put in place this year. So other, if we didn't have that in place, then I think that's where Rod, I would agree with you on more the two or three year, but I would be likely supportive of a five-year, just because we have a formal process in place to address concerns. I think the 9:00 PM stop time should be a 7:00 or 5:00 PM, I think that was kind of just bypassed over from our prior comments, so I think that's important. And then I am supportive of conditional use limits for the seven-month period from March to October. So those are kind of my final comments. Kelly?
Yes, Kelly Russ, I appreciate all that, I guess my, it's awesome that we have a vehicle in place for complaints. But it's not tried and true to know what the next step is, so you know, it's like people can complain, and then what happens next, or does anything happen next? So I'm not going to sit here, and although I did say there's a formal vehicle in place, I still have not seen things where the complaint's been taken seriously, and then there's been some sort of action. So I don't know whether we want to add that in this as well, but my other, you know, again, my concern, I don't know all the specifics of the baseball field, so for, since we keep comparing the two apples to apples with the number of people, the times, all that, so I can't really speak on that facility. I just think, you know, again, as Stillwell grows, every time we add one of these, it opens the door for the next person to come in and say, well, you gave that. And I just feel like it, at some point, we need to be very clear on drawing certain lines before we're on that slippery slope, and there's no, you know, and I agree with, you know, I think I mean, I look at the golden criteria, and this does not fit like Commissioner Wingott said. I mean, so you know, and I get there's different perspectives, but we have to look at this as a single entity, but then as a whole as well, of what that means. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think to move this along, I would like to make a motion at this time, if, see if it gets a second. And then if it does, it can be discussed and voted up or down, but I think we need to figure out where we are here. My motion is as follows, I move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to allow an athletic training complex for amateur baseball and softball on 9.8 acres located at 1922 O'Noll Avenue for a term of three years, subject to the stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And in addition, that the conditional use permit will not allow any CUP authorized activities on the site between October 30th and March 15th. By that, I mean, commercial activity on the site. And further, that the commercial activity on the side during the CUP must cease at or before 7:00 PM.
Question, Sean, do we need to make stipulations on the change in the staff report on the people numbers? Staff report dated October 26?
I think if, if the board, if the motion would be to include that, I think we would note that.
Sure. Well, the way I made the motion, just to clarify, yeah, that is per the staff reports for the reasons outlined in the, in the staff report, subject to the stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report, which would include those modified people numbers, and as you suggested, a concern, everybody, coaches, athletes, spectators.
So Sean Pendley, as I understand it, the motion then is to include the numbers as recommended in the staff report, but that, that's what Mr. Richardson is motioning, yes, with two additional stipulations.
Correct. Well, yeah, the three-year CUP. No activity between October 30th and March 15th and the 7:00 PM shutdown.
Is there a second?
This is Dan Foyle, I'll second.
We go and do a call?
Is it not discussion on that motion? Yeah, so, this is Fred Winger, so we're limiting action and time of year, there's not going to be anything happen there anyway. So I mean, we're, you know, it's, it's not a time that the property is going to be used, so I'm not even sure what's, you know, isn't our role to look at the golden criteria? Isn't that what we're charged to do as a board, is to apply the golden criteria? So, you know, I, I, I would ask, you know, I would quiz the members of our board, you know, does, does this CUP meet the golden criteria, and how many points does it meet the golden criteria? Meet the golden criteria? And how many points does it meet the golden criteria? And, you know, to limit it in a time of year, it's not going to be used on. Um. And I have, would have concerns about that. The showcase events. The time of operation. But my number one concern is the golden criteria.
I second that.
Sean, would you be able to? Comment or review why staff is in agreement that the golden criteria is achieved?
Yes, Sean Penn, they plan a staff. So as we noted in the staff report dated. August thirty-first. Staff reviewed every. Criteria in the golden criteria for land use action. As staff indicated in the report, we believe that. The conditional use permit, as stipulated, does meet. The intent and requirements of the golden criteria and staff did recommend approval of it, as noted in that staff report. Certainly, there are. Board members that may disagree, would not agree with that, but our, our recommendation was that, as noted in the staff report. In Article twenty-three, section six. We reviewed every one of those criteria. And as stipulated, as staff recommended, we believe that it did meet the golden criteria.
Any additional conversation on the motion and the motion has been seconded?
This is the chair. Mr. Chair, uh, sorry, uh, I want to point out one thing, the baseball field down the street from us. Uh, the other one, the one that's right by me, my understanding is that the cup included that it was not commercial. That it is not a for-profit is the, is a difference, I would say as well. It's, I guess it's kind of, he just lets people use it for baseball. I don't know if that's true or not, but. That was my understanding.
Um. Mr. Chairman, I, I, I just want to say that, first of all. Um. I've heard and I personally read every comment that was given and the written and everyone, everything that everybody said. If I'm sitting out there, I'm with you. I just think that. What our charge is up here is to. Uh, essentially try to balance the interests of the applicant. Uh, with the interests of the community, and since it is a conditional use permit, I think we have to consider a number of things, and I would point out. That the golden criteria is certainly important. Um, but it's only one of many considerations that this board is supposed to look at when making a recommendation. Uh, and I think under the circumstances, um. I didn't find, I mean, personally, based on what I understand about this. I didn't, um, I didn't see any reason to dispute the staff's, you know, conclusions. About the golden criteria or the reasons that were outlined for. Uh, that this should meet to be a conditional use permit. That is not to say that they're not subject to debate. Um, that's what we're here for. Um, and I think everybody up here could make a good argument for whatever their position is. But it is our job to make a recommendation to the B O C C. And part of that is. I don't think we can completely ignore messages subtle or otherwise from the B O C C about what their. Their particular view is on this either. One concern I have in making my motion is that. If this board decides to simply reject this, this is going to go up. And very likely could be kicked back again and then ultimately approved as applied for. And I don't think that would be in the best interest of the community. I'm trying to to form this motion in a way that would do two things. One, limit the activity. Um, that people have expressed concerns about. And also to give them a, a period of time. Um. A period of time to, um. Show us that they can in fact operate this in a way that is acceptable. I realize that's a risk for them. Uh, because of whatever money they have to spend to make this work for, for. Couple of years. By the same token, um. Uh, it's a risk for the neighbors to allow that to go forward. I think, uh, uh. Mr. Klingon Smith, our chair, has correctly pointed out a couple of things. One, that commercial activities are on, allowed on R U R. I mean, it. Zoning is a, is a fluid thing, and there's not a lot of absolutes in it. Um, and I say that as a zoning lawyer for the last fifty years, having been more times on that side of the dais than this one, I guess. Um. I think, I think you have to look a little bit further down the road, and I'm thinking, well, you know what, if, if we muck this up. Uh, Mr. Peterson and his firm are very adept at figuring out where we screwed up and, you know, then somebody ends up in court and. It doesn't help anybody to do that. So I'm looking for some. Reasonable way to make this happen in a way that puts pressure on the applicant to prove what they're, they say they can do and make it work at the same time, provide. Reasonable protection to the residents. Even recognizing that there's going to be a little noise involved, but hopefully it's not as any worse than a cow weaning operation. Um, that keeps me up at night when it, when it goes, and that's twenty-four seven. So that's my thought. Um, I do think it meets the golden criteria. I do agree that is it, is it completely consistent with the surrounding uses? Well, no, of course not. It's, I mean, it's. It's, it's a, it's a baseball field. There are no other baseball fields around. That's why it's a conditional use permit. Um, and that's where these conditions and stipulations come in to try to make it as, as close as possible to what. Should be approved. So. I don't, I don't suggest to you this is a perfect solution. I suggest that I've offered it as a bridge to something that might work. Uh, that might also be found acceptable by the B O C C rather than getting us in a position where. For whatever reason, they may decide to just approve it as applied for. Uh, and then we haven't accomplished anything. So that's a factor in the reason I made the motion the way I did.
Kelly Rass, with all due respect, the B O C C is going to, they've proven they'll do what. They see fit. They've done that before. They'll do it again. I've seen on the planning commission. When we have justified every rationale and they still do their own thing. So I'm going to place my vote. On how I see it. For today, not trying to second guess anybody else, not, and. That's all I have to say about that.
Um, this is Fred Winger.
Okay, I understand.
Commissioner Richardson, would you accept an amendment to your motion? Would you consider one?
Um, sure, what is it? But yes.
Um, would you strike, uh, number four to eliminate the showcase events? Because that is a. A peak event that's going to attract a large number of people. Um, could we move the hours of operation down to five PM? On point five? So it'd be nine AM to five PM. And strike, um. Sunday from. So it would be Monday through Saturday.
Um.
Well, he ponders that. You're not in support of the showcase, having a trial and see how it goes? And see how it's operated and then have that getting reported back? I thought that was a pretty good addition. Because I agree with you. I am against the showcase. I don't think the infrastructure will support it. You know, I don't think the parking's there. And so that's why I, I'm kind of supportive of what staff and the applicant came up with is. Try one, let's report on it and see.
I, I think we're.
Disagree with me.
I, I do disagree with you. Mr. Chairman, on a rare occasion.
There's no enforcement. There, I mean, they're operating right now and they don't even have a CUP. So our enforcement's lacking.
Well, to, to keep this sort of on the rails. I'm, I totally understand exactly why you suggested that, and if my motion. Craters, then, you know, you can make, you can do whatever you think is appropriate. I'm not going to accept the, the amendment. I want to see if. This would work because I really believe that's the best way to go because I would believe if the showcase events can be produced. Without creating havoc on the site and, and, you know, getting them kicked. Two years down the road. Um, I think they ought to have an opportunity to do that. Plus the fact we have these tests. People will be monitoring it and seeing it. I fully understand that B O C C can do whatever they want to do because they're the deciding body, not us. But we have to make a recommendation, and I think. I think they deserve a chance to show that they can do this. I may not personally, you know. Know exactly how they're going to be able to do that, but I think they ought to have an opportunity to try it rather than just being. Uh, denied. Um, and for that reason, I make the motion, and so there it is.
And I want to make sure we don't lose light. There's no speakers. The biggest thing in Stillwell that we hear constantly from the residents, it's in the Stillwell Community Plan, is no lighting. And this has no lights. If this thing was covered in lights, I wouldn't even probably even gone through this effort to even have the discussions. No. So there's no lights on us, and that's a big deal. Any discussion before we do a roll call? Additional discussion? If, so what we have on the table is a motion made. As, as read, um, three years, seven PM stop time. And it was March fifteenth to October thirtieth. With all other stipulations and information in the application.
Mr. Chairman, with the current makeup of our board, how many votes are required for a? Something to pass?
Three.
Three votes.
Three.
I'd call the question.
We've got, uh, yeah, legal staffs here weigh in on the, the majority, majority of our board is for, so we have a last legal's opinion on it. Or based on the full.
They're based on the full.
Okay, so I'm corrected by legal staff. Four, three is the majority of who's present here. For a majority of the board is seven. The majority of the board is four votes, for a positive.
So.
Vote.
This is Fred Winger. So in order for this to pass, we need four positive votes tonight?
For a, for an affirmative vote, we would need four votes.
Thank you.
It's negative.
I, um. Let me ask legal counsel a question. It's Rod Richardson. Since we, since we only have four present, uh, I mean, there are not seven members of this board. But, or, I mean, there are, there are five members of this board, but we don't have seven members. There's nobody has been sworn in on this board. There is no seven members. Uh, I need to understand how we can essentially have two fan of members controlling the vote on this thing.
I think it's based on, I think it's based on who's present, that is the actual voting. So actually, we're, we're, we're checking this now, staff. I will check the. Votes for the board.
See that? That's almost.
Yes. But.
They didn't vote positions.
But it's.
Sometimes that's, yeah.
I.
Makes sense.
Well, I think it's based on who's presenting, yeah, majority. So. We're, we're checking this in the, in Article four in our regulations. We believe it's, uh. It's based on the majority vote of the members present. For the board. We have a quorum. The majority of those who are present. For a recommendation of approval or disapproval.
So I think I'll defer to, uh, the Sean, but that's not typically been my experience, but that's, uh, but I don't have, I have, uh, interacted with a specific regulation before. Can you repeat that?
This is Karen Miller. The way statute is written, it's, it's majority of the board when you. Do something new like approve and then a new comprehensive plan or a new set of zoning regs. But when you go before the board with like a rezoning or a CUP, it's majority of those present. But they're confirming that.
So three.
Three.
Mr. Chairman, with the, um, addition of the, the showcase being struck and, and change in the hours, I would support. This amendment, this, this motion, but I'm not supporting this motion the way it's written.
Would we need a roll call?
We do. Are we still waiting for official? Comment prior to roll call?
I think, this is Sean Penn, the plan staff. I think based on our zoning regulations, it is correct that. The, the vote would need to be received by a majority of the members present, according to Article four. Uh, a vote of either for or against a proposal by a majority of the members present shall constitute a recommendation of approval or disapproval. However, a vote for or against a proposal by less than a majority of the members shall constitute a failure to recommend. So that's. You either take a vote, get a, an approval or denial, or if we don't have this vote, doesn't get a majority vote, it's a failure to recommend.
It's a.
A failure to recommend. So basically, it would, it would move forward with no recommendation. Uh, essentially, um.
Uh, this is Fred Winger. Couldn't we make another motion that could get?
You, another board member can make another motion following this vote. We can make another motion with a separate, uh, motion, correct?
Right. Thank you.
But only if this motion fail.
Only if this motion fails, right? If only if there's motion doesn't fail and that somebody can make another motion.
Let's find out.
Any final discussion before we go to roll call?
Ready?
Okay.
Dan Foil. Dan, was that a yes?
Yes.
Kelly Rass?
No.
Fred Winger?
No.
Rod Richardson?
Yes.
Ken Klingon Smith?
Yes.
So that's three in favor to oppose. Motion passed.
Yes, so Sean Penn, the plan staff, so Mr. Chairman, that, uh, so this motion will carry forward. The motion for approval with the amended stipulations as, uh, mentioned by Mr. Richardson. So this case would be scheduled for Board of County Commissioners for final consideration. On December seventh, twenty twenty-three, nine thirty AM, Board of County Commissioners here in this board meeting room, one-eleventh South Cherry Street.
Arbor Day.
Mr. Chairman, Fred Winger here. For the record, Commissioner Richardson, there's a new way of weaning calves where you put the cows on one side and the calves on the other. And there's a lot less, this has been used for about ten or fifteen years. So we'll have to recommend that to the farmers down the road from you.
I.
Is this, this is actually a best practice that I'm aware of.
Best practice has been closing all the windows.
There, there you go.
All right, with that, um, so that'll go December second, um, at nine thirty. And again, that's just a recommendation to the county commissioners. Any other business before the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Sean Penn, the planning staff, I just wanted to note, we do have a special meeting that's scheduled for November sixteenth at six thirty PM. For an application with the East Zoning Board. It's in this room as regarding a proposed soccer complex on Metcalf. Same time, new date, November sixteenth. It's on our website. We've posted it. Uh, there will be a packet and information going out by November ninth to the zoning board and will be available on our website. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for adjournment if there's no other business?
Kelly Rass is making a motion to adjourn.
Fred Winger, second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.